Many agenda items. I also want to let Trish and Steve know that if it starts getting late, we can table some of this for another time. Speak up because we do, I know everybody's got a life outside this place and all that too. So, we do have a public hearing at 5:45, so I'm going to start out with some action items that we can get through until we get to that. I will go with number one. Discussion on Fair Ground Common Victual License. Lobster Fest Common Victual License. The following people have already submitted applications that have been to the Board of Health, Lobster Love, Miss Emily Food Truck, Mulaney's Fish Market Corporation. In the past, the Board has approved common victual license applications in advance contingent upon receiving the necessary paperwork and fee, $10 per license. Some of the applicants come from long distances and come in right before I would ask you for the license. You keep a log of who has applied and the license numbers given to them as well as a copy of each license granted. If you wish to do this, you could vote on additional common victual license applications contingent on receipt of necessary paperwork and fee. An approval of the Board of Health, we will put out a blank license for you to sign, which we will copy, fill in, and use as necessary for additional information, additional applicants. Thank you, Jenna. Also, do you mind, do you guys mind if I not ask if you guys have any comments or questions on it? And if you do, just chime in so we can just keep this going.
So if we, so if you want us to say something?
Yeah, I won't, I won't ask after each one, but if you guys do have a question or comment on it, just let me know. Does that sound good? Okay. So I move that the Board vote to grant common victual license pursuant to Mass General Laws Chapter 140, Section 2, to the following vendors for the event known as Lobster Fest at the Marshall Fairgrounds on Saturday, September 20, 2025, with a rain date of Sunday, September 21, 2025, for Lobster Love, Miss Emily's Food Truck, Mulaney's Fish Market Corporation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Marshall Cultural Council Summer Content Entertainment Series donation on behalf of the Marshall Cultural Council, please accept this donation of $161 from Ned Bangs. The above donations should be placed in the Marshall Cultural Council Donation and Gift Account Number 222-648-00483000. The donation will be used to support the MCC Summer Content Entertainment Series. The MCC looks forward to developing partnerships with local businesses, organizations, and individuals as we continue to expand and upgrade this family from the event. Thank you for your continued support for this event. Marshall Cultural Council Constellation, August 2025. I move that the Board approve the donation of Ned Bangs, actually, am I reading that right? Of the Marshall Cultural Council from Ned Bangs on behalf of the Marshall Cultural Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So a council on aging, Robert Saunders, $300. I move that the Board approve the donation of $300 from Robert Saunders on behalf of the Marshall Council on Aging. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You know something? I want to, I want to go back to number two because I do believe I messed that up from the beginning. I just want to make sure I get that corrected. On number two, I move the Board, I move that the Board approve the donation of $161 from Ned Bangs on behalf of the Marshall Cultural Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, we'll do the opioid fund committee one. So that'd be number five. Nope, six, seven. So this is to appoint Daniel Mahoney to the Opioid Fund Committee. Daniel Mahoney, 89 A. Corner Street, Marshall, Mass. 02050. As I approach 67, I have over 40 years of experience in the recovery world from patient to counselor, LAP certified, church counseling. I move the Board vote to appoint Dan Mahoney to the town's opioid fund committee for a three years. Is it going to be a three-year term?
Yes, three years.
Three-year term?
Yes.
So that'll be ending in 2028. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So number eight. The Original Brant Rock Village Association is respectfully requesting a permit to facilitate our fourth annual Turkey Trot Family Fun Run fundraising event to be held on, in Brant Rock on Saturday, November 29, 2025, from noon to 3 p.m. This trot will span a distance of 2.2 miles proposed for the following route. Start on the Espinar Green at corner Dyke Road and Ocean Street, go up Ocean Street to the end of, and turn around at the Caldasack across from the Blackman's Point fence, then head back down Ocean Street, left on Bradford Street, left on Island Street, right on Branch Street, left on Cherry Street, right on Central Ave. Transition to Town Pier parking lot adjacent to Cut Riverside. Transition onto the sidewalk of Drive Back Way, turn onto Dyke Road and cross over to the Union Chapel lawn to finish with music and refreshments. This will be our fourth year holding this event. We expect approximately 150 to 200 participants. The OBRVA will be providing guides throughout the event and showing that participants are directly directed properly and safely throughout the event. Following the run, we would be providing light refreshments, music, and awards to various participants of the Union Chapel lawn area. As we are sensitive to the events already in scope for this weekend, our plans to start the event with registration at noon on the Union Chapel lawn. The fun run will begin at 1 p.m. and we anticipate that all participants would be off the roads within an hour maximum. So discussion, so I move to vote to grant permission to the Original Brant Rock Village Association to conduct the fourth annual Turkey Trot on November 29, 2025, in Brant Rock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
To make a certain, Wesley Public Schools would like to use the Marshall Beach facilities for an outdoor marine science field trip. We will be sending approximately 30, 40 second grade children from each school. The trips are fully supervised by parents and teachers will take place approximately 10 a.m. to 12:45 p.m. The fall dates we are requesting are as follows. Tuesday, September 30, with a rain date of October 14, 2025, at Wrexham Hunter Wells School. Tuesday, October 28, 2025, rain date in spring of May 22, 2026, at Brant Rock Bates School. Students gained enormously by outdoor science work and greatly appreciate your cooperation with our effort to provide them this opportunity. We will, of course, respect your site and return all creatures to the sea before we leave. Teachers will request bathrooms by Colin, the beach administrator. Thank you in advance for sharing your lovely beaches with us. It is exciting to have students engaging in authentic field investigations. Lisa Fox. So I move that the Board vote to authorize Wesley Public Schools to use Wrexham Beach and Brant Rock Beach for school-related field trips on Tuesday, September 30, with a rain date of October 14, 2025, and Tuesday, October 28, 2025, with a rain date in spring of May 22, 2026, 2025, on dates agreed with the beach administrator. Do I have a second?
Can we just stop there?
Yes, Cindy.
Hi, I was forwarded that request, and after October 14, the barriers will be going in, so there will be no public access for the students on the 28th of October.
Were they notified of that? Or are you just picking up on that now?
That's what I sent back to Jenna.
Oh, so we don't know.
To send to the schools.
All right, so you haven't heard back from her, I think?
I have not heard back from Jenna. She wasn't in today to double check.
Oh, to Jenna, okay.
Yes.
I don't know. It's, well, I guess we can go, well, the barrier's going to be, there's no rider access. Is that what the plan I'm doing is using the?
The North Street entrance, yes, is what they would use, and that will be blocked up.
So I guess if that's going to be the case, we'll approve them for September 30. And you've already informed her, right? We just don't know if there's any communications back on her, right? So, all right, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. So let me start that over. I move that the Board vote to authorize Wesley Public Schools to use Wrexham Beach and Brant Rock for school-related field trips on September 30, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Maybe we can ask Peter if he would call.
Yeah, we'll follow up with him.
Okay.
I mean, Jenna's in tomorrow too, so.
Yeah, Jenna's in tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
We could just add a contingency to the motion to approve any dates that are okayed by Cindy, and that way save everybody a lot of time.
That's not a bad idea. Yeah, so, all right, so I move that the Board authorize Wesley Public Schools to use Wrexham Beach and Brant Rock Beach for school-related field trips on September 30, 2025, and other contingent dates that can be agreed on with Cindy Castro, the beach administrator. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, can I just ask that you give us the number before you start reading?
Oh, I probably, that was number 12.
Well, thank you.
I thought I said that. I thought I said 12.
No, you were counting in your head.
All right, so the, actually, we probably maybe do one more before the hearing. 13, 14? Let me see. What did I just have on? I think it's 13. Yes. All right. Tom Marshall, Select Board Application for Temporary Day Entertainment License Cars and Copters LLC, Cars and Copters. Address of applicant, 38 Melrose Street, Arlington, Mass. 02474. Marshall Fairgrounds, 140 Main Street. Event description, a premier automotive aviation event featuring specialty cars and helicopter displays. Date and time of event, Saturday, September 27, 2025, 10 to 4 p.m. Show car check-in, 8:30 a.m. Type of entertainment applying for, recorded music, and then checked off any other audio or visual show, amusement or exhibition. Estimated number of persons will attend, we expect 3,000 to 5,000 people. Contacted concerns, Pete Lottis. The applicant for indoor/outdoor, be outdoor entertainment. Is there a tent? Yes. Will be food served? Yes. And attachment A, Cars and Copters 25 is a premier automotive aviation event featuring a mix of specialty cars, helicopter displays, and select high-end vehicles available for close-up viewing. With, the event will also feature food trucks, a DJ, and a VIP hospitality lounge. And it looks like everything is.
Mr. Chairman?
Good with the, yep?
Are they going to be serving alcohol at that hospitality lounge?
I don't see anything that states that.
Okay. Because it makes a difference as to which provision of the law you're acting under. If there's no alcohol, then, and you're not otherwise giving them a common victual license, then you act under the second box that I created in the motion, Chapter 140, Section 183A. So that would be the box you check. Oh, somebody with questions over there?
We're actually here representing the event, and we did apply for an alcohol permit, which I think is further down in your, for the fairgrounds.
Well, the fairgrounds would apply for that separately, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, so if they did, then that'd be, if I haven't covered it yet, it'd be another item.
Okay.
Okay. Are we good on that, Bob?
Yeah, because it relates to this applicant.
Okay, so when we get, so when we get to, is that fairgrounds one going to be a different?
No, you just handle the fairgrounds license the same way they always do.
Yeah, separately from this, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And you don't, and you, then you're acting under the Section 181, the first box.
So when you say the first box, what do you mean the first box?
On the draft motions under number 13, it says, "I move the Board vote to grant a temporary entertainment license to Cars and Copters LLC for an event at," this will be the fairgrounds, and then under box number one, there's two lines there. Both don't apply, only one does, so it'll be under the first box. So you're subject to license under Mass General Laws Chapter 140, Section 181. And then you're allowing them to play recorded music on the date between the hours of 10 and 4, subject to any conditions, if you want to put any conditions on it. So I did it as best I could without the application packet.
Oh, so you didn't have this in hand when?
I did not, no.
Okay, all right, that explains it. All right.
So it looks like it's just under box one, or the line one, 180, Section 181.
All right. I move that the Board vote to grant temporary entertainment license to Cars and Copters LLC for the event at the Marshall Fairgrounds, subject to the conditions under Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 140, Section 181. And number two, allowing recorded music on September 27, 2025, between the hours of 10 a.m. and 4 p.m. And then town council recommends that they name a person in charge for police and fire purposes.
Actually, they have, there's an, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if you can speak. They do have an email about regarding fire EMS.
Yes.
And then police.
So Bob, when you say person in charge for police and fire, are you talking about?
If the marshal police or the marshal fire department or EMS has any problems there, they need to have one person that they can contact. So, you know, in the event the event had to be evacuated, or there was an emergency, they know who to call, and that person's cellphone should be available to them immediately.
Do you have?
Yeah, that would be me.
That would be you?
Yeah, we've already met with the police proactively to talk about all of this, so.
So do I, should I add that as a condition?
Just add this young lady's name and?
Yeah, Britt Ryan, B.R.I.T.T., last name is Ryan, R.Y.A.N.
Okay, anything else I have to, just the name?
No, because they're working out police and fire details on their own. That's fine.
Okay. All right. Subject to the following conditions, as a point of contact for police and fire, Britt Ryan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Attorney Matthew Porter on Zoom.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'm muted. Do you hear me? Okay?
I can't, Mr. Attorney Porter. Thank you for making a presentation here. So we have an agenda item here. We got, so transfer of annual wine and malt package store licenses from J. Shama Corp., DBA Jackinson's. And then we have a wine and malt package store license, transfer of seasonal alcohol package license from J. Shama, DBA J. Shama's, Jack Johnson's, Kamalish Patel. So do you want to give us a brief overview on this?
Sure. I do have to, so before the Board, there's actually two applications tonight, but they both relate to the sale of the same.
Hold on, hold on, Attorney. Hold on, Attorney. I'm sorry.
Sure.
I messed up on something.
Yeah, just make sure you read the hearing notice because it's a public.
Oh, I apologize for that.
Sorry.
Okay.
Then you can go right into it.
Public hearing. I move that the Board vote to open public hearing on the application for transfer of annual wine and malt package store license and the transfer of the seasonal alcohol package store license from J. Shama Corp., DBA Jackinson's, Kamalish Patel Manager to Amnia Incorporated, DBA Jackinson's, Dippen Patel Manager for the premises located at 1919-1921 Ocean Street, Marshfield, Massachusetts 02050. Board reviews application prepared by Attorney Matthew Porter. Board questions, public comment, Board vote. Okay, good? All right, Attorney Porter, I apologize for that. You can continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for Amnia Inc. As was just read into the report there, before you was a transfer of two licenses, both related to the sale of Jackinson's. Jackinson's right now holds an annual wine and malt license, and then they hold the seasonal all alcohol license. So Amnia Inc. is applying for a transfer of each of those locations, or each of those licenses, I should say, from the seller. Very straightforward transaction. Nothing is changing as relates to the business, so no changes to the structure type of business that's taking place, no changes to the hours whatsoever. Mr. Dippen Patel, who's on the call today, is one of the principals of Amnia Inc. He's also going to be the license manager, meaning that he'll be the one there on-site, you know, at a bare minimum of 40 hours, if not, I'm sure, or for a week. Mr. Patel, very experienced operator. He's worked in the retail convenience and packster industry for over a decade now. He is alcohol tip certified. All employees will be required to be alcohol tip certified as well. So, you know, essentially, this is the sale of a very well-established business in town, you know, being sold to an established group with no major changes. In addition to the request for the transfer of license, there's also a request for a pledge of license. Rockland Trust is financing the transaction, and as a result of that, they're requesting a pledge be approved from the Board as well. But certainly with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions, as is Mr. Patel.
All right. You and I spoke earlier in regards to some of the paperwork that you had sent us in regards to the concerns I had that which you said, yeah, you can't correct. So just for the record, on the Corey request form for Tanvee, Avini Bhai, if I'm saying that last name right, the middle name should be, was filled in, it should have been the last name. And then the, and then the place of birth, you have a city name for India, but we're going to, you're going to change that to make it just India, correct?
Correct, yes.
And then for Dippen Patel on the Corey request form, you have the place of birth as the city of India, one of the cities of India. We're going to put the country on that.
Correct.
And I believe on the Corey request form for Hashad Patel, there's going to be a correction made on the state license that was marked down as Alabama.
Yep.
And I think we're good, you know, the place of birth.
And just to note, all of those have now been sent to Jenna. So they are, I know she was out today, but they're all in her inbox, so she'll be able to swap in those corrective pages before she sends it off to the ABCC. So I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, and I believe going through that, that's all I have in regards to any of my concerns. Steve, did you have any questions or comments on this matter?
No, thank you.
Trish, did you have any questions or comments on this matter?
I just have one. What, he mentioned that there were two, actually two votes in front of us?
Yes.
Or licenses?
Yes. There's one for the seasonal all alcohol package store license, and then there's another one for the Walt, Wine and Malt Package Store License, yes.
Okay.
So we have to take two separate votes on this.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so everybody's good here? So I move that the Board vote to approve the application to transfer the annual wine and malt package store license and the transfer of the seasonal all alcohol package store license from J. Shama Corporation, DBA Jackinson's, Kamalish Patel Manager to Amnia Incorporated, DBA Jackinson's, Dippen Patel Manager for the premises located at 1919-1921 Ocean Street, Marshfield, Massachusetts 02050.
Mr. Chair, if I may not interject, but would you mind adding the approval of the pledge to that motion as well? ABCC can just be a little bit petticky with how it was run in, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, so make the pledge.
Definitely, when you read that, in, you know, in addition to the, you know, approval of the transfer of license, there would be approval of the pledge of license to Rockland Trust as well.
This one, all right, so this will incorporate the pledge of license to Rockland Trust.
Excellent.
Is that good enough?
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Conduct the vote by us. So, so I'm going to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's a unanimous vote. No one, no one's opposed to this. I think that that takes care of it. So three, all three in favor. So move on to the, the next one, Bob, is the, is it going to be the same vote?
No, one is, the seasonal one is the annual, so it's actually two different votes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I'm, am I missing the?
No, on the motion list, the first one was the vote on the annual, and the second motion is on the seasonal.
The way you wrote it up, you have.
Oh, my motions have two separate ones.
So the second motion would be a move that the Board vote to approve the application to transfer the annual wine or the seasonal all alcohol package store license from J. Shama Corp., DBA Jackson's, Kamalish Patel Manager to Amnia Inc., DBA Jackinson's, Dippen Patel Manager for the premises located.
Well, I mean, yeah, actually, the vote has both of them, the wine and malt package store license and the transfer of the seasonal, so.
So you could just break that out and do it separately.
So do I have to redo the vote on the first one, separate them?
Just do a second vote on the seasonal.
Just do a second vote on the seasonal? So just skip the, all right.
I'm sorry about that.
Attorney Porter, you don't need a pledge on the second vote, do you?
I believe there's pledges on both of the licenses, just because the bank, God forbid, if they ever need to use the pledge, they would know which were operating depending on the time of the year. So I think it would be the same motion, just an approval to transfer with a pledge of license to Rockland Trust.
And then just add the, with the pledge, the license.
So I move, so I am, questions or comments, anything?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. I move that the Board vote to approve the application to transfer the seasonal all alcohol package store license from J. Shama Corporation, DBA Jackinson's, Kamalish Patel Manager of Amnia Incorporated, DBA Jackinson's, Dippen Patel Manager for the premises located at 1919-1921 Ocean Street, Marshfield, Massachusetts 02050, with the stipulation that the.
The license be pledged?
Yeah, the license be pledged for Rockland Trust. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's all three in favor. No one opposed. So I think, I think we're all, we're all good here, Bob?
Yes.
Everything good? All right.
I'm sorry. I really appreciate it once and for all. Great evening.
You're saying?
Yeah, bye now.
All right. I'm going to, I was asked to move an item up, and I'm going to do that. It'd be 18 and 19. Discussion on update from Collins Center on town administrative candidates. Do you have anything for us, I'm not Peter?
Yeah, what they're looking for is the. Yeah, what they're looking for is to incorporate a range of pay for the position so that they can include that in the advertisement. That's typical in these in that it's usually a range of between, you know, usually it's in a, you can either say it's in a range of a number or a range between two numbers. And they're usually within $20,000 of each other. I provided the board earlier this morning with a list of salaries paid in adjacent communities, and they range from in the 160s for some of the smaller adjacent communities to 225,000 for, for one neighbor in town. I'm suggesting that you be in the 200 area to be competitive and to attract the best candidates. I think you have to be in the 200 to 210 area of compensation, given the size of the community, the complexity of the issues that the community faces, and the narrow, or, you know, the, and the idea that you want to attract the strongest candidates possible. And to do that, you're gonna, you're gonna have to offer a competitive salary that's gonna recruit somebody from a job that they, they may be happy in right now. So happy to answer any questions other than that, but that's, you know, that's the final thing that the Collins Center is looking for before they, you know, put the ad out that has been previously discussed.
So is this something that we have to vote on and agree to, or what are we looking at here? Because we don't have it marked down on the agenda as anything that we're gonna be voting on.
Okay, I'm looking for guidance as to, you know, what the, what the range is, and I can bring back, you know, the ad for subsequent vote if you want, but it's, they're just asking for, you know, how much do you want to put out there for the position so that you're not attracting candidates that won't come if the money isn't competitive.
All right, Steve, would you get any thoughts on this?
Yes, I think what Peter's proposing makes sense, right? I mean, there's a lot of challenges the town faces. There's been a lot of volatility and turnover, and if you look at current towns, right, Situate right now, next door, is paying 225. You have Hanum's paying 220, Cohasset's 205, Duxbury's paying 190, Hall is paying 191. And then if you look at other towns and their current advertisements, I mean, Kingston's advertising a range that goes all the way up to 216. Norfolk's going all the way up to 205. Westwood's 220. So, right, we're not looking for someone in a vacuum. We are competing with other communities and trying to attract talent. So given the size and the scope of Marshfield, I think it would make sense if we did a motion that approved Peter's recommendation to move forward.
Trish?
I agree. I agree with all of that.
All right, my look at is that, I understand what Peter's saying and what Steve's suggestion is just, I'm a little wary of putting out more than we should, you know. I understand people like to base in other communities and all that, but we also gotta base it on what we can afford, but also what, how much we should put out. And just because we put out a higher salary doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna attain the best talent either, in my opinion as well. We can end up with somebody that we may have regrets for six months down the road without knowing. So, I mean, I'm open to what you guys think the range should be, if you want to comment on that.
What we could do is put a top end on the range and say it's commensurate with experience, and then during the interview process, that's when you weed out the people who would not be worthy of that top end salary.
Like, experience, education.
Yeah, I would say experience is a big one, especially what they bring to the table. Absolutely. So I mean, so should we say like 180 to 200, or what are we looking at here?
I think you've, I would say 210 being the, the top end, and then add more to that. Because again, you, you want to attract someone that's highly qualified, and they may just look at it and say they're not taking it seriously.
I mean, to me, that seems like high, in my opinion. But it's a.
Look at the size of Marshfield. Look at the other communities that, what's got, what's, what they're getting for their town administrators.
And also, there's been some discussion amongst, you know, residents that, hey, we want to look at the private sector too. These salaries, if you're trying to attract somebody away from the private sector, the salary won't do it. I'm sorry for what you're looking for in the talent for this position respectively. You want to be competitive. I'd say if you want to put a lower range, go 190 to 210. And, and that, that should be competitive. But if you don't have the high end, you're not gonna get the best candidate, you just won't.
I can, I can, I think I can live with what Peter just mentioned. Are we all good with that?
All right, I'll, I'll let the Collins Center know, and if there's no objection, they'll, they'll start running the ad.
My thought is also that Peter's looking at the books and the budget, and he, you have an idea of what is there, so if this is not attainable for the town, you would not be pushing this forward.
Yeah, I think, I think it's.
Okay.
I just, my only thing is that, I understand everybody's thoughts on it, just that even though if we pick somebody who like, there's no guarantees, then we're gonna sign to a three-year contract, and then I just feel that we're gonna be.
It's not gonna happen.
I hope so.
We've got a great search committee, you know, we have a lot of people, there's a lot of phases that this individual will have to go through. It's not gonna happen. And then there's ways that there can be a probationary period, so.
As long as we can work all those details out, then I can feel at ease.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Number eighteen, discuss.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, absolutely.
One of the topics that we're discussing in executive session, given the nature of the topic, one of the people we need to attend is being paid overtime rates right now, so it might behoove us and the taxpayer to get to that sooner rather than later.
I think I already talked about it. Okay, all right, well, I was asked to put this up, so, all right. Discussion and vote to review, number eighteen, discussion and vote to review an approved town administrator employment advertisement.
So that, basically, you just, you just threw the last part of it, so.
So what is the, what are we doing in regards to employment advertisement?
It will go out to the MMA and to various other professional websites and publications to be advertised.
All right, so when it gets advertised, and there are interested parties, who's collecting? The Collins Center, it's going right to the Collins Center?
Yeah.
And then they're gonna relay it to the search committee afterwards? Is that how it's going?
Mm-hmm.
Comments, questions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. As of right now, I apologize to Mr. Hickey, this was unexpected, but I'll try and wrap up the executive session, get you guys taken care of. All right, so. I gotta move to.
I think it should be in the beginning.
Yes, I gotta find the beginning of that. I just went through all this, missed all my paperwork up.
You want a copy?
No, actually, I got it right here. Just flipped it over. All right, I'm gonna go into the executive session. I move the board vote to enter executive session pursuant to the provisions of the Marsh General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, as follows, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property where the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body pursuant to Marsh General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, six, property address withheld, to discuss strategy. Number two, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares pursuant to Marsh General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, three, Marshfield Firefighters, two, five, six, eight. Number three, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel pursuant to Marsh General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, two, to wit, select board office staff. Number four, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares pursuant to Marsh General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, three, to wit, Marshfield Police Department, to discuss, number five, to discuss complaints or charges against the select board alleging violations of the open meeting law pursuant to Marsh General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, one, to wit. Four, complaints by Laura Sweetie, and the select board re-enter open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, everybody, I'm gonna bring this back at the session. Next up, number thirty-four, discussion on social vocational technical high school update. Gentlemen, come up front.
Thank you.
I have you.
Now, I believe you guys sent in things to Jenna, right?
Yes.
And I don't, did you guys get them by chance?
Yes.
You did? All right.
Now I'm putting a face and a name. Sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
That was a while ago.
It was a while ago. So I'll kick it off, if it's okay. You know, first of all.
Name and address.
Okay, yeah, Jose Zambello, 36 Rights Way. And I, first of all, I wanted to thank, thank all of you, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Kelly, and Mr. Dossie, for the opportunity to represent Marshfield on the school committee for the Volk School. I mean, I gotta tell you guys, I told you in December, I'll tell you again today, it's an incredible experience, and so I really do thank, thank you guys for what I've learned, what I found about the school. It is so impressive. That, let me just, before we kick it over to Tom, I wanted to just give you just a story, because I think you kind of hear about, it's all about the kids, right? So this summer, I was in, I was in Roach Brothers. I was in line, and cashier, he kept on looking at me, and so he looks at me, he looks at me, you know, what's this kid looking at? So finally, he says, Mr. Zambello? I said, that's right. And he said, are you on the school committee for the social Volk School? And I said, as a matter of fact, I am. I said, Ben? Is that Ben? So if you guys remember, we had the video back in December, and one of the kids that was on the video was Ben. And so I said, Ben, how you doing? He said, I am just doing great. And I said, well, how was the year? I said, I gotta tell you, it was fabulous. I learned so much, I made some great friends, and honestly, I think it's the best decision I ever made in my life. And so I'm hoping that other, hopefully other Marshfield, other Marshfield students feel that same way. But I, I think it's, I thank you guys, because just hearing from Ben tells you that it's really worth it to have an alternative to our public schools, public schools in Marshfield. So Dr. Hickey, we'll talk in a few minutes, and he is a subject matter expert, but, you know, one of the things I wanted to just tee up with you guys, certainly, we've had a lot of discussion about the Volk School. Mr. Moore, thank you for finding the money in the budget. And I think this may be an opportunity, this discussion, to, you know, take some of the budget away from, from, from Marshfield in terms of what we have to achieve every year, with having minimal impact to the kids. And so obviously, the schools being built, and really, tonight, I think that, you know, Dr. Hickey wanted to talk about Pembroke. Pembroke's very interested in becoming the tenth, the tenth community to be part of the Volk School. I think if they do decide, and we all decide to let them in, there'll be some financial benefits for us, so that could be something good. Most importantly for me, at some point, the school committee will vote, should we move forward or not? And again, Dr. Hickey will tell you about all the steps before it gets approved, but I just wanted to get a feel for, if you guys think it's a good idea for us to move forward as a community, being one of the towns, to vote yes, let's move forward with the, with the Volk School. So with that being said, unless you guys have any questions, again, Dr. Hickey is the expert, so. No, you're not the expert?
I'll do my best.
So I'm gonna turn the load to you. Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thanks very much for having us. Framing in the Pembroke conversation, if you've maybe seen some information on, on that, I'll start at the end and work backwards. There's a chance that we might be coming to you with seeking a warrant article in the spring of '26 to amend our regional agreement, much in the same way we did so to bring the town of Marshfield in, and much in the same way we did when we adjusted how we calculate debt share. The town of Pembroke has formed a regional planning committee. They are, they're very interested, the committee is very interested, their, their K-12 school committee has taken an affirmative vote to join. I've supplied you with just a few basic slides on, on the topic. The way that the process works, very similar to when Marshfield was looking to join, and when we had conversations. The Department of Education plays a role. Their job is to make sure that regional agreement language is still meeting with current statute. Given that we've just recently updated the regional agreement in the last couple of years, I'm not envisioning that's gonna be an issue. Essentially what, essentially, the conversation goes something like this. We have a community that wants to join. We have a very big building project in our future. I think there is merit to bringing, to increasing the size of the district to help with cost sharing in the long term. Not just the cost sharing of the building project itself, but also the cost sharing that comes with growing an operating budget. Our, our operating budget is subject to annual appropriation and approval from the towns, and so that can only grow at a pace that our, that our towns can afford. What we're looking at with Pembroke would be something that would start with the 27, 28 school. twenty-eight school year, where we would bring into the district ten students in the ninth grade class. And then after that, we would bring in students in the same formula we use now, which is, basically, it's apportioned by the size of the eighth grade population. Based on some rough estimates and Pembroke's relative size, and a high degree of confidence that they would be a district that would probably fill the seats that would be offered, I would project probably about ten percent or so of whatever, whatever school size population we could have, that they would eventually crest up to about ten percent. So, to Joe's earlier point about in terms of what's, what's the, what's the trade-off, or what's, what's the savings, I would probably put a price tag right now of around four-point-two million dollars over the life of the borrowing, just for the district project. That's savings to, to Marshfield, Marshfield's share. And I would say, I would use that same percentage of about ten percent across, across the board. And then the operating piece is something that would, that would reveal itself over time, certainly. The trade-off is that the way that we, in a similar, in a similar spirit with Marshfield would be, when Marshfield joined, which is, you reapportion seats. So, you, you, you make room on the couch for the new roommate, that's going to help pay the rent. And that's how the process would work. Pembroke would join twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Now, I'm talking as if this is a foregone conclusion, and it hardly is, but it's, I appreciate you wanting to hear just a little bit more about this now, because there are multiple steps to this. And I'll drill in a little bit deeper on the, on the process. Our regional school committee will likely take the matter up later on this month. The regional school committee has the ability to put an amendment out into the universe, to send it from the regional school district out to our nine-member towns and to Pembroke. Pembroke is asking that, if they can take the matter up at a fall town meeting, that that would be great, but that ultimately, the matter would then go quiet and then resurface in the spring at nine respective town meetings. Six of the nine communities would have to say, have to say yes for the matter to then move back to the Department of Education, for the Commissioner of Education to approve this. So, it could be something that gets some attention and some traction in the fall of twenty-five, and then it's back on respective agendas and warrants for, for the spring of twenty-six. If the Commissioner then, for, for us to bring this forward, I, I was on a call with the Department of Education today, we want to make sure the language passes muster with their legal department, so that we're not walking anything back. I, I feel reasonably confident with that. And then the matter would, again, go to the Commissioner, and then it would go into effect for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. The other, the other information that I wanted to share with you beyond the timeline was just to pivot and give you a quick admissions enrollment update, but I'd be happy, Mr. Chair, to answer any questions either right now about Pembroke, or we could circle back to it, just in the interest of time.
So when you said the, the savings, the four-point-two million savings to Marshfield, are you basing that on the new construction?
Yes, that number, that number would just apply to, to construction. And that's with me making several assumptions in terms of borrowing rates, but I, what I would do is I would go back to the numbers that we were using prior to the approval of the project, and estimating Marshfield's share of the population, and how would a town like Pembroke change the calculus? And so, I'm reasonably confident that they would, they're about ten percent of the eighth grade population within what we would say the ten towns. So, when you scale up, when you scale up the student population, it's, it's, right now, it's, it's, it's not, it's not precise, but I think it's in the ballpark to say that when they eventually enroll four, four grades of students, and their enrollment goes from nothing to something, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and then it should probably plateau with the normal dips and increases. That's where I'm getting the ten percent.
And what is the, the application, like, from Marshfield to Social Voc Tech? Are you, are you able to accommodate everybody that applies there, or do you have to deny some of the kids that are going there? What are we looking at here?
Yeah, so that's, so that's the other side of this arrangement. There is generally a waiting list. We've had, I mean, upwards of three-hundred-and-seventy-five applications for a hundred-and-ninety, about a hundred-and-ninety seats. So, the messaging that I would be sending out to our school committee members and to our towns would be that if, that in the short term, in order to, in order to make room, like, if they join in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, that happens to be the last school year that we would be in our current building. And so the school committee has, our regional planning subcommittee is recommending this, but with the, with the proviso that in the first year, that we have a cap. And then after that, it would be based on the, it would be based on a proportional formula. For Marshfield, what would that mean? It would mean, Marshfield's the largest community of the nine current, and when I look at eighth grade population trends, we're probably looking at anywhere from thirty to thirty-four seats per year. I would say Marshfield would probably have to absorb a three-to-four-seat haircut until we're at a point that we can increase overall school enrollment, and then we would see some of those numbers recover. So, you're, you've got a fixed amount of space, you've got a fixed operating budget, you can't grow the budget faster than the towns can pay for it, so we're not adding more teachers, we're not adding more programs. So a waiting list of sorts would still exist. When I talk to oversubscribed communities, and I would count Marshfield as an oversubscribed community, even in this early stage, based on application interest and, and placement, there are communities that don't use all of their seats, and so we have a formula that we reapportion unused seats, and that same formula would, would apply. So, every community is apportioned seats, and then if there are unused seats, those seats get reapportioned. So there's an initial trade-off, but it's something that I think would eventually be reconciled, especially if we're eventually in the position to be able to enroll more, more children. But that's not, that's not happening overnight.
No, no, I get that, but, but I was asking, at the current status, in regards to Marshall students applying currently at Social Voc Tech?
Yep.
Are you able to accept them all, or do you have to deny some of the kids right now?
We put kids on a waiting list. So the, the numbers, the numbers we have right now are, we have thirty-six ninth-grade students, and currently have five on a waiting list. And we started with sixty-one applications. And so when a student apply, and I could go, I can go a little bit deeper on this, when a student applies, they're either, we either, we're able to offer them admission, or they're put on a waiting list. What you may have picked up on in, in the media in the last several months is that the state has changed regulations regarding vocational admissions. So my answer, my answer will end up being the same, except what you'll hear me talk about it perhaps at future meetings, is that we're required to move to a admissions lottery. So hypothetically, one year from now, the kids currently at Furnis Brook, they applied, there's sixty-one of them, we apportion thirty-four seats to Marshfield. Right out of the gate, the first thirty-four that are pulled out of the bag are offered admission. And then the rest are placed on a waiting list, and we go and ask those first, say, thirty-four kids, do you want, do you want to accept the offer of admission? Many will say yes, some will say no. Some might say no a little bit later on. As we prepare for this first-ever admissions requirement to go through a lottery, what we would end up doing is, all of the, all of the students who apply on time would be drawn out of the lottery. So everyone knows, not their exact name, but a student, an identifying number of some sort. And we would show all of the kids from each of our towns, and every family would know where they stand. Did, were they, were they randomly chosen within the allotment, or were they on a waiting list, and where on the waiting list are they? So, I would put Marshfield right now in the category of Hanover or Situate, where there is a full allotment filled, and there's a small waiting list. That's, I'm just using this current freshman class right now. So, so that might have gone a little bit too deep, but it is, it is a current topic, lottery, admissions, waiting lists. And so right now, there are sixty-nine students in total. So this would really be the second cohort of Marshfield students, grades nine to twelve in the building. We have a few students that are in grades eleven and twelve, in large part because they've either moved to town, or they may have moved and now they're, they're older. But the vast majority of the kids, as you would expect, would be in grades nine and ten.
All right, yeah, 'cause I was just, I mean, this is a decision that people in town are gonna make, is, I mean, the big one is that if you allow Pembroke in, it's gonna be roughly four-point-two million dollars in savings for the town in regards to the construction costs. Then the other factor is that, okay, we allow Pembroke in, how many, we already have the students that are on the waitlist, how many more are we gonna add on? So it's gonna be something for the folks in town, especially the parents that are looking to send their child there. You know, especially if you go to a lottery system, they gotta factor that in as well in regards to the decisions on this as well. And then all the other communities, I would imagine.
You're right, Mr. Chair, and I, I would say that the, if I project that Pembroke were to send twenty students per year, multiply that by four grades, we're, we're at eighty. So, when we can get to a point that we can increase our student enrollment north, higher than eighty, that haircut I'm talking about with the seats will begin to be able to reconcile that number. I think the trends are pretty strong with vocational education in terms of the demand being there, and I think the towns that have shown that through the application process, despite the lottery causing, I think, I think the lottery for several years is going to cause a lot of difficulty because families will, I'd be happy to talk another time or send you some information on this, but it's, it's, it's largely beyond their control.
Right.
And that's difficult, to say, your child just wasn't lucky enough. But in, but in any event, that's...
So, to Eric's point, which is, which is a very good one, in twenty-twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you can see a three-person loss, a three-student loss.
Yep.
But we're building the new school.
Correct.
So it, so twenty-seven, twenty-eight, may go down three students. Tough question, I realize, but a projection, when do we break even, get our three students back, and even more? What year?
I, I honestly couldn't give you the, I, I wouldn't want to paint an unnecessary, I, I rosy picture of that, because it, it would presume that the, the towns could support an operating budget. So in theory, oh, if, if I can shake the money tree, we could hire a bunch of teachers and we could fill to capacity. I really, I want, when we were talking about the building project, I mean, I was saying, you, you know, we might not get to full capacity for seven or eight years. It truly, truly depends on where we can, is, is the state gonna revise its funding formula? Is the state going to, is the MSBA gonna revise its reimbursement rates for building projects? We're gonna be chasing a grant that just posted a week ago. The state put out a sixty-million-dollar in the aggregate. We can apply for up to five million dollars for vocational expansion. Very exciting. They are going to hopefully give preference to schools that are in the MSBA pipeline. So we're gonna go after five million dollars, and if we're fortunate to get this, it will time perfectly, and it's not five million in addition to the project, it's, it's our one chance to get outside money to help lower the part of the project that is not MSBA-reimbursed. Could that be a game changer on the operating level? You know, maybe it could. But I really, honestly, I would say, it's difficult to say.
Because I, because I think to Eric's point, I, I, I think I'd wanna know, and you probably can't answer it, but I think I'd wanna know, these three students we lose, am I losing them for three years? Am I losing, you know, when do we break? And again, tough. When you add eighty seats, we break even.
When we add eighty seats, we break even. It could be as early as four years, and we, we restructured our teacher contract through our last round of negotiations, and we were able to get some additional instructional blocks, which actually allowed me to be able to increase the size of the freshman class from a hundred-and-eighty to a hundred-and-ninety. Now, that's a small adjustment, but it's ten additional families that we got to say yes to, and that can certainly compound, compound over time. And again, I think the other piece that we can't a hundred percent predict, we can look at trends, which is really the, how many unused seats are there? Because if that, if that delta changes, in the same, and, and, and that can also change where we might have historically under-enrolled communities that they may start using more, more of their seats. But it's interesting, we're one of the few vocational schools that apportion seats, and I've always felt it to be a, a very orderly and transparent way of saying, we're, we're paying for this, we're paying into this district, we want to make sure that we have some, we're paying in, we want to make sure we have some return on investment on an annual basis. And I think this lottery system statewide is going to lead some other schools to take a closer look at that, too. Because everybody says, yep, we have an allotment, we stay in our lane, and that's what I'll be bringing the school committee in the next month or so about a revised admissions policy. So, yeah, so for now, Pembroke is a headliner topic, but it's all interconnected. It's interconnected with funding, it's interconnected with admissions policy, but it's definitely something that we would be coming back, along with, I'm, I'm looking forward to, you know, annual budget conversations, and I would very likely tie this Pembroke conversation into any wintertime conversations around fiscal twenty-seven and beyond. It would fit nicely.
Do you have a rough idea of how many students from Pembroke, about one or ten?
Based on Pembroke's proportional size, I've been casually using twenty. That's without that first-year cap. When I look at their eighth-grade population and compare it, the numbers fluctuate as each, I looked at the SIMS data from kindergarten through grade eight last year, and I looked at it for all of our towns, and then looked at, you know, put it in a percentage based on, if we had a freshman class of one-ninety, what would it be? The average number was about, it averaged out to about twenty. If I can increase the size of the freshman class, all of, all the towns' numbers would go up, you know, if I can increase it by ten, every town nets one, and so forth. But basically, I'm looking at, if nothing else changed, eighty kids over four years, starting with ten, right, you know, ten, thirty, fifty, seventy, et cetera.
And what was the, the maximum, everybody's maximum seat allotment?
It's based on the eighth-grade population, but I'll, I can give you a range and say that, you know, Marshfield is in the low thirties, all the way down to, say, Hanson, which might be fourteen or fifteen. The size of your eighth-grade class, the, the number of eighth graders in your town, divided by the total number of eighth graders in the district, is what we've been using for years as a way of...
That's your formula?
...apportioning the seats out of the gate. And we reset it every year. We don't look at trends, we don't say, because your town was under-enrolled, we're gonna, we're gonna lower the number. Every incoming class, every town gets the same apportion share. So, is it possible that, you know, Marshfield could have a year where the numbers drop? I can tell you that that is going to happen. It happens in all of the towns longitudinal, over decades, but that doesn't appear to be the case for right now, and I think in the short term. But that's the formula that we would use going forward. Now, the numbers, all school districts captured official enrollment numbers as of October first, so as we get, as we inch closer to budget season, I'll be happy to keep, keep you informed, because those numbers, of course, matter. As we pivot from the building project to operating budget, et cetera, that number matters, and so we'll, we'll certainly loop you in on, on that information as well. Steve, any questions?
No, thank you for coming in for the updates. I know it's been a lot of moving parts, it's very complicated from the very beginning years ago, and so you've done a good job trying to herd the cats and shepherd the lawn, and, you know, if the numbers work out and we're able to split the burden, the cost of the school in other town, you know, that would be a good thing. And, you know, one of my favorite memories is when I was working at Roach Brothers in high school, and I love listening to the contractor who would come in to wash the windows outside, and he was a great guy who could talk a dog off a meat wagon, and he would tell, you know, he would tell a story about his two sons, one went to college for criminology, and the other went into the trades to become an electrician. And his son who went into the trades to be an electrician is making more money than the son who went to college. So, everyone has different skill sets, and not everybody needs to go to college, and you can make a really good living going into the trades and being a plumber or electrician. And I think anybody who's recently had to wait a few weeks for a plumber to show up would tell you that we need more plumbers and fewer lawyers, so the more kids we can get into the trades and make a good living, there's definitely a good need for it. And just in terms of the next steps, it just seems like you're waiting to hear back from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and from Pembroke, and that's kinda the next steps that we'll be waiting to follow.
Yeah, the voters, residents of Marshfield and all of our communities will have an opportunity to weigh in on, to get into the weeds, what exactly are you talking about, if it, you know, at, at, at town meeting, in the spring of twenty-six. That's, if this, if this goes to plan, that's, that's where it would end up.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to say, I, I know I shared this when I came to meet with you, but a friend of mine's son went into the electrical program, and he had his first year last year, and this child never said boo, and he's a totally different kid, and he just said he had such a fantastic time, so it was a great year. So I just, I, I thank you, and thank you for bringing that information to us.
Thanks for sharing that story. And Mr. Chair, if I might make just a, a quick plug, our annual Fall Open House is Saturday, October twenty-fifth. It's not just open to prospective families, anyone from the, anyone from Marshall that would like... It's not just open to prospective families, anyone from the, anyone from Marshall that would like to, that would like to see the school in operation. And for families in Marshfield who have a child in grade eight, what we also typically do in the fall is, uh, we have staff that will go to the middle school, make a presentation, we'll coordinate with MPSD about a tour. We'll send one of our buses down for kids that might wanna tour the school so that there is awareness raising for parents, caregivers, and students in the fall.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you to both of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
All right, um, since we're on the page number thirty-five, discussion on, and vote on enterprise account update. Probably not be a vote, but at least Peter didn't give us an update on the enterprise accounts. I know we sent out the Board of Public Works to, uh, figure out the formula and everything else. And it's my understanding, the last meeting they had, they, I believe, ironed it out. So have Diane gotten back to you? And I believe that's supposed to come back to us, right?
I received a copy of their RFP today. That, that's the most recent update that I have. I haven't, I received it this afternoon. I haven't had the, the opportunity to review it, but I can put it on a future.
Okay.
As a future.
Do you ever take that up? Uh, is that gonna be both with the, between us and the Board of Public Works? Or is that gonna be just that?
It's, it's there on it. They're gonna pay for it.
They're gonna pay for it, but, uh, we have to vote on her, right? So...
I, I'm not sure you do, but, uh...
We look into that?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
I thought it was supposed to be something that was gonna be approved by both the Select Board and the Board of Public Works.
Okay.
Uh, any questions on that, Steve?
They've always had the authority to do the audit. They just need to decide the standard that they want to use for the audit. So once they can do that, then Peter and Town Council and our procurement officer can put that RFP sheet together. But nothing's holding them back apart from deciding the standard that they wanna apply to the audit.
No, it's, uh, no, 'cause I remember the, the last conversation on that in regards to it, you were bringing up that they gotta iron out what the mathematical formula was. I think there was a couple of years that they were using, I think, in those audits, I think there was two formulas that, that were put together.
Right.
And I, I was under the impression that, once they iron out all those details, that they had to conduct to us, uh, for approval. But if that's not the case, then I'm good with it.
Okay. I'll, I'll double-check the prior meeting, but, um, and we'll put it on another agenda anyway.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, what you might be referring to, it, it ties into the standard of what they wanna use. It's which indirect policy do they wanna use?
Correct.
Right?
Right. They're, they're advocating for, uh, actual indirect costs plus a formula based on, on the total, um, town budget, including the school system. What's been used the last couple of years is, uh, a thirty-page formula that tries to capture indirect costs through a formula. And there's, um, some preference to go back to the earlier way. I don't really have a problem with the other way because that's the one I'm familiar with. But, uh, as long as they're counting apples to apples, I don't have a problem with it.
Good. Trish, anything?
Yeah, I, I was under the same impression as Steve on that, that they were, just had to choose what they were going to use and then move forward.
All right, well, glad we brought it up, so I'm not on a lot of this. Let's see here. All right, so discussion on vote on MBTA zoning. It says H thirty-five oh seven, so, um, I wanted to, um, discuss this with you two because I know that there's been, many people in town are opposed to this. And I've been doing my homework and figuring out how we should... How can we stop this, especially when you got the State Supreme Court, uh, authorizing it? And, um, and you got the governor and the Attorney General breathing down our throat, pretty much trying to force us to, to do this, uh, which is still my belief that it is the vote of the, the town to do it. And I came across, when I was doing my research in regards to three A B, it was, it stayed in there that, in three A B, that the, they, they highlight Charlie Baker's speech from twenty seventeen, I believe. So I looked into the speech, and in the speech, uh, he, he, this is what he states. In December twenty-seventeen, the Baker-led administration launched the Housing Choice Initiative. This program encourages cities and towns to plan and build the additional housing that is vital to success of our Commonwealth by providing incentives, rewards, and technical assistance to municipalities. The Housing Choice Initiative has put us on a path to produce a hundred and thirty-five thousand new units of housing by twenty-twenty-five. We are proud that, uh, yearly seventy, nearly seventy communities have been designated Housing Choice Communities and are participating in the program. Last fall, we announced five million dollars in capital grants for thirty-one communities to assist them and address crucial infrastructure needs to support local housing production efforts. At the same time that we announced the Housing Choice Initiative, I filed legislation to address a significant barrier to housing production that the state has created. State law by cities and towns in Massachusetts from adopting changes in zoning laws unless the municipality is able to secure a two-thirds supermajority vote of its legislative body. Only a handful of other states have similar requirements. None of our neighbors in New England place this sort of restriction on local decision-making. This self-inflicted wound has damaged our ability to build the housing our residents need. A bill received widespread bipartisan support, therefore, I am refining this legislation in the form in which it was reported favorably by the Joint Committee on Housing, an act to promote housing choices, as was the case with the original bill, legislation allowing cities and towns to adopt following local zoning by majority vote of legislative bodies. And then it goes on, uh, listing a, a bunch of things. So the, reading the, the Baker speech there in regards to what their goal was, and especially if it was highlighted in three A B, in my opinion, well, it was in there, but this is my opinion is that... My look at is that the Charlie Baker, when this came up and was voted on, I believe, in twenty-twenty-one, was not that it was a law that they were gonna cram us down our throat. It was what, uh, incentives to do it, um, and, uh, have us adopt it. And I, my look at is, I think this could be useful for us in our fight against it. Because one thing, there's two things there that is mentioned is that, uh, the Baker administration would wanna eliminate the two-thirds majority at the zoning, at the, the town level to, uh, for a major, majority approval. And, 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 um, they wanted a simple majority to do it. And as well as the grant fundings that were part of three A B, um, those were not to be used as punishments, as you read this, but as to, uh, be an incentive for a town to, uh, accept this and, and, and push forward on building new, new homes. So I wanted to get your, both your perspectives on this, both your perspective in regards to, um, should this be something, and as well as Mr., uh, Bob, Town Council's opinion in regards to, is this something that we should use going forward in regards to our fight? Especially with Town Council, the date is coming up for Town Council to, um, argue this, potentially in front of the Massachusetts Supreme Court. So do you have anything, any comments on this, Steve?
Just a question for Town Council, 'cause I know you've asked us, you know, if there's another argument that you'd like us to add to let you know, and you'd be happy to, you know, make that argument or provide your assessment on the merits of it or the likelihood of that, you know, having traction. When is our deadline to file? And, you know, what are your thoughts based on your legal experience and years of practice?
Well, what I'd be comfortable saying at this particular point is that, um, we filed our appeal and perfected that in August. We have also, just as recently as last week, made a application for direct appellate review at the Supreme Judicial Court. We do have a briefing deadline. It's likely that that'll be extended slightly. But our three main arguments are, and these, this is no secret, we filed this in court. So, um, we've told the SJC, these are our issues, that the MBTA law was a poorly worded law that was basically imposed on the cities and towns. And the, the major flaw that we saw with the law was that, unlike a lot of other state laws, which are mandatory in towns, cities and towns, and we have to follow what state law says because Marshall is a town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that's organized and existing under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We have to follow those laws. This law has a very different, um, process for enactment. And it requires Marshfield Town Meeting, which is our legislative body, to vote yes. And the argument that we've made, and we've lost, but we're gonna, this will be an appeal, is that if town voters show up at town meeting and they're told they have to vote yes, they're really don't have a, a vote at all. And their constitutional rights under the state constitution, um, have been disenfranchised. So, um, Eric Kelly and I have talked a number of times about this, including off the record. And he's mentioned Governor Baker's speech. And in two thousand seventeen, he gave two speeches. He gave one in January outlining this Housing Choice Initiative. And then he, I think that was part of his State of the State speech as the governor. And then he revealed more ideas about it in December two thousand seventeen. And that's where he announced that he would change the voting requirement to make it easier for proponents of this type of zoning to pass that change when it came up at town meetings or in city council meetings, in the cases of cities. So, um, I'll certainly gonna make reference to those types of things. But I think the one thing we all have to know is that what Governor Baker envisioned at the time is now radically different. The bill's been amended, the law has been amended at least four times. And now we have a decision from the Supreme Judicial Court saying that the law is constitutional. That's a decision that was rendered in January eighth of two thousand twenty-five. And the effect of that decision, the, the relevant effect to me is that the court said that even though the, the law by its terms says that they can take, um, the seventeen grant programs that are enumerated in the state and deprive the town of Marshfield or any other town that doesn't pass it of those grants, the SJC has also said the Attorney General has the authority to compel compliance in a different way. And I think you all are aware, and the public should be aware, that not only has the, um, housing, housing of livable communities said that's the seventeen grant programs that are out there, but they said all of the discretionary grant programs are subject to their withholding. So it's not just seventeen programs. And Marshfield is actually, I think we've lost three grants. Two that we were certain to get, one that we had applied for, and it's just never been acted on. So to Mr. Kelly's point, we are raising that issue. I've made everybody clear, you know, crystal clear as, as much as I could that, you know, the state is predisposed to, uh, supporting more multifamily housing, particularly in communities that they view don't have enough. And Marshfield, because of its status as an adjacent MBTA community, arguably has to come up with another twelve-hundred-and-seventy-six units of multifamily housing somewhere. So we're raising that issue. We're also raising the issue of whether the statute creates an unfunded mandate. And by that I mean, and again, no secrets, 'cause the arguments are all out there, if we have to zone and have, and have this by right, we will fail the financial consequences of that. And without state funding, um, that's a problem for us. And there was a law that came into play when Proposition Two and a Half came into effect that says that the state can't pass a law or a regulation that require, that caused more than incidental costs that are directly related to the compliance with the law or regulation. So we're arguing that. And the third argument that we've identified is that we actually filed a pretty well-pled complaint. And when I reviewed the Superior Court ruling, which dismissed our complaint, it was almost as if they didn't pay attention to what we actually pled. And that's a procedural argument, it's not a substantive argument. But we're raising that the, we're raising the claim that the judge made a mistake and applied the wrong standard in dismissing the town's case and not allowing us to fully flush out all the things that we alleged. So those are the issues. But I, I, um, I'm, I'm trying to find a way to work Governor Baker's speech in, but I, I think what Governor Baker may have envisioned might not be exactly the way it's been rolled out and how it's become, but I haven't asked him. So, um, it seems different, though, but I'm certainly gonna try to incorporate that, that sentiment.
And in terms of the legislation evolving and being amended and updated, the State House is also considering adding Chapter Ninety funding as something that they would withhold from towns that aren't in compliance?
I've heard that, but I haven't seen that. And I don't know how far along that is. I hope we're not the only one that they do this to. But, you know, Chapter Ninety funds are critically important for us to keep our public ways maintained. And if we lose that, um, it's something that we desperately need. I mean, it's a million dollars a year in, in our town, or, or just under a million dollars. So if we don't have that, um, there'd be a severe consequence to us. I can't promise you it won't happen. And I can't promise you that the state doesn't have the ability to legislate a manner in which that could happen. But I hope our state legislators would protect us. And every other community that that would also impact.
And as things stand today, how many towns are left standing, challenging the state and ready to go to the Supreme Court?
Well, I don't know how many are ready to go to the Supreme Court, but there are three towns that have appealed the decision to dismiss their cases. That's Marshfield, the town of Middleton, and the town of Weston. Weston has a town meeting article in October that, uh, some people believe might be passed, which might settle the matter in Weston. Middleton is a little different than Marshfield and Weston in that it is not a town that has an MBTA station, and it's not next to any town that has an MBTA station. And they have an argument that we don't have. They are all raising the argument that it's an unfunded mandate, but Middleton has their own special argument that there really shouldn't be an MBTA community. And there's a possibility they could negotiate a solution to reduce down the number of housing or make some other deal that we wouldn't be the benefit of, 'cause we're different from them. So it's three right now. I am told that Wilmington and maybe one other town are unlikely to pass the MBTA zoning by the end of the year, which is when the next deadline comes up. And when that deadline comes up, it's possible that those towns will not have acted, and they'll be in a similar situation to Marshall, except they won't have sued the state. And that's the time that the Attorney General's office has publicly announced that they'll begin enforcement actions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that it? I just wanna let everybody know that, uh, the Attorney General's office did reach out, I don't know, three weeks ago. That's when we had the Friday meeting in regards to the boards and all that. And we were supposed to meet with them. And, uh, they did not wanna meet with the Select Board in public, so they backed out of it. They kinda wanted to keep it a closed-door session, and I was opposed to that. So, um, it's unfortunate that they would do that. Trish, do you have anything to add?
No.
Ask?
No.
All right. So, um... I just wanted to let you guys give me my thoughts, and then Bob'll give you his thoughts in regards to what we're doing here, or at least what I think. And like Bob said, he's gonna incorporate it into his argument. And I think, I think it's a good possibility that this could work, but we don't know what the courts are gonna do. So we'll see what happens. All right. I don't wanna keep Mr. Vaughn waiting any longer than he needs to. So... Discussion vote on the Jetties' use of Paco Mart for outdoor dining. Is Mr. Vaughn here?
Uh, no, it's my cousin.
Okay.
Good evening. Sean Cullen on behalf of the Jetties.
You can sit over here if you want. Name and address, and I'm ready when you, uh...
Sean Cullen. You, you want my address?
Well, at least we, yeah, I mean, it's piled up the records.
I'm from Rudolph Friedman. My, my business address is ninety-two State Street.
Okay, I'm sorry. So... So I bring this back, because I'm still getting people that are bending my ear over this, and they're not in agreement with it. They think it should be rescinded. The, there have been people bringing up the fact that they think that Mr. Vaughn is in violations of certain things that were agreed to back in, I think we put this together, and I think there was a vote on back in last May or June. And so I also would like to get Town Council's thoughts on this in regards to it, and then see what you have to say. So. The approval may be suspended or revoked by a Select Board for any violation of applicable state, local laws, bylaws, rules, and regulations, or said approved, is no longer permitted by state law. And then the hours of operation of the outdoor table service shall be 11:30 a.m. to 10 p.m. from April 15th to Columbus Day. I'm not too sure if there was a violation on that, but then there should be one handicap pocket space will be required. Listening to the last, I think it was last EPA meeting that Mr. Vaughn was at, I believe Andrew Stewart was saying that it doesn't apply as a handicap box, but I guess the way it's set up, is my understanding. And there's supposed to be five spaces in the rear of the property that must be indicated on the site plan. Imagine five pocket spaces, which I don't believe exist. And employers are required to park in the town beach lot after 4 p.m. So, and I would, I would look at that, that people are, just believe that this agreement should not be in, I guess perpetuity, I guess you could say, and all that. So Bob, what do you, what do you think in regards to all this, in regards to how we should handle this? Because, I mean, I'm getting different opinions from people, left and right, and, you know, there's some, when the Select Board last year put this together for, in regards to the requirements, people out there feel that they're not being met. So is it incumbent on us to take this up and review it, or?
My opinion would be that if you want to take action of the nature that you mentioned, that this matter be scheduled for a formal public hearing where the applicant is given notice, has the opportunity to present evidence, the public can be heard from, and then the board could act. But I would not be in favor of the board taking any action absent advance written notice. Now, I understand council's present, but council's present, I'm gonna guess, because he, he or his client saw it on the agenda. That's not written notice. That's notice that we're gonna discuss it, but that's not notice of a suspension or the rescission or some type of disciplinary action. And I think that we potentially create a problem for the town unless we have that type of a environment to decide whether the complaints are valid, whether in fact they've breached the conditions pursuant to which they were given approval to have an outdoor table service. Some of these things might be apparent to us right now, and I don't want to discount that, okay? Because if these conditions were imposed, and then the, then the proprietor of the business didn't follow them, I mean, we're gonna know when and when they didn't, but that's, again, not gonna come out in a proper form tonight. The Jetty may have people that says that didn't happen. They may want to explain why. The butters who maybe see this exactly opposite and that there's a clear breach, they're gonna want to be heard, maybe then all got here present tonight. So I really think if you're inclined to do that, then, and I do think you have the authority to do that, I think it needs to be done in a public hearing.
All right, so we gotta call a hearing for this.
Yes, and you gotta...
To that, we gotta give them a reasonable notice period of time, and it's not Thursday
to a Monday night. So, you know, I'm not pronouncing one way or the other how I think about it.
Right.
When this issue came up before, I heard from council, I heard what he said before, you know, the board didn't take any action, but I think we all knew at the time that the zoning board had taken the matter up too, because there's a request for site plan approval that's related to this in front of the, in front of the zoning board, and it's actually on their agenda tomorrow night.
Correct.
I sent you all the notes of the meetings, so you can review that. That might be, that might update you as to where the ZBA is at, but there's a request to approve an amended site plan for them that, you know, the ZBA is potentially gonna decide tomorrow. So, you know, again, I just, I think it would behoove the Select Board to act after reasonable notice and an opportunity to be heard, where you can hear evidence, then make a judgment as to what you want to do.
All right. So, all right, so I look at, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I would say, I would agree with Town Council, but I would say there are really two issues. One is the notice of the hearing, the other is the notice of the alleged violations. My client has not been given any notice of that.
No, no, I've been informed that. I, I understand.
Well, at the last meeting, I thought we had a very lengthy conversation, that to the extent that the board was going to consider revocation, that that was going to be best based on a formal citation, not anecdotal he said, she said. So if there was a formal citation by any of the regulatory boards by the town of Marshfield, that there was an actual cited noted violation, and my client had an opportunity to both receive notice of that violation and an opportunity to cure that, that was the type of violation that could potentially give rise to this type of hearing. Not an anecdotal he said, she said, somebody made some complaint, they said this happened on this date, not that type of thing. An actual formal citation, formal notice of a violation, not anecdotal. So again, I think there's an issue about the notice of this hearing, but more importantly, there's got to be formal notice of the alleged violations that my clients are being accused of. We are entitled to know what the alleged violations are and who are making those accusations, what the factual basis for those accusations are. That's just basic due process so that my client can adequately respond to that. And that's all I have to say.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, do you have anything to add, Steve? Or?
Yes, in addition to what they said, you know, if there were to be a public hearing where for amount of public notice and warning, we would want to put the time and effort into collecting as much information as possible, you know, so you would talk to the building department, you would talk to the police department and see how many complaints there have been. Is it from a variety of people or mostly from one person? Have the complaints been investigated and substantiated and apply credibility to them? So we'd want to gather a lot more information before we put something like this on the agenda, and we wouldn't be able to take any action tonight as explained by, you know, both councils. So, you know, just going forward, I think it would be good that we consult our professional staff before we put something on the agenda, because them having to be here on the agenda tonight has cost them time and money, you know? So I think going forward, it would behoove us to be a little bit more thorough and more careful before we do something like this, but I agree with everything that's been said. And just the one question that I had for council was, you know, for folks who might be tuned into the Select Board meetings but may not watch the ZBA meetings, did you just want to give a quick update on what you have before the ZBA, how long the process has taken, what some of the delays may have been?
Truthfully, ordinarily, I'd be happy to do that, but I honestly received notice of today's hearing at 2:30 this afternoon, drunk, ran into my car and drove down here. So I've had very little opportunity to prepare and actually give the board that information. I'd be happy to do so, again, if I just had a little more opportunity to prepare for that. But if I could talk to my clients and then give the board with reasonable notice an update on where we stand on everything, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Anything to add, Trish?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So 37. Discussion vote for Select Board to be involved in contract discussion, budget process discussion with school committee. So I know this is generally, this goes on in a formality, but, you know, the whole thing is, I don't know how much involved the town gets involved in regards to the contract discussions with the schools and certain matters. So, I mean, how does this process all work out in regards to, and then how much the Select Board should get, should be involved in this, or at least the Select Board office?
So I've had the opportunity to speak with the superintendent of schools, and the way that they prepare for negotiations is they have a committee that represents the school's interests in, you know, in preparing for negotiations and proposals. And a representative of the Select Board would sit in on those meetings and vote on what the offers would be and so forth. The direct bargaining is done by a small group who would report back to the committee, and then that committee votes on whether or not to accept tentative agreements and things like that. So you'd have input on the offers and the counteroffers and things like that, but you wouldn't be directly at the table across from the teachers. It's a, it's a good role, it's a productive role. It, you know, gives you insight into what the concerns of the school committee is, and then you can share concerns from the town side as well. You know, I think the superintendent said, you know, the school committee would welcome that type of a role of a representative of the Select Board.
All right, so is, did Mr. Solomon, Superintendent Solomon, say, you know, how they would notify the Select Board, like give us a heads up prior to the start of negotiations or conversations?
Yeah, that he would once, once somebody's identified as the liaison or the, you know, the representative. So, yeah.
Waiting for the Select Board to...
No, no, he's looking for who they should notify. He'll notify the board. I'll follow up after tonight and say, can you let us know, and we'll send someone.
Yeah, I mean, well, they're gonna, well ahead of time when they plan this, right? Okay, all right. So I didn't expect to have a vote on that, I just wanted to put that on there just to let everybody know in regards to the status of that. The... Winslow Village. Discussion vote to sign affordable use agreement assignments for Winslow Village. Rationality, affordable units at Winslow Village are being sold to a new nonprofit company that will own and operate them under the same terms and conditions and affordability requirements as the original order. There was also a clerical error in the original restriction of the town. Marshfield was supposed to be holder of the restriction with the right to enforce the restrictions. The assignee Winslow Village Preservation Limited Partnership is an entity owned by a nonprofit corporation known as Housing Preservation Incorporated. As a, HBI is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to preservation of affordable housing throughout the United States. They are based in Memphis, Tennessee, but own affordable projects all over the country. HBI has closed over 100 Section 8 transactions across the country and has a portfolio totaling approximately 13,000 apartment units. HBI has acquired 69 Section 202 communities from nonprofit groups across the country similar to Winslow Village 1 and 2. They have a strong track record and a great reputation with HUD in the affordable space. The affordability levels of the property will remain the same following the sale, and the perpetual affordable housing restrictions are favorable to town Marshfield. The property is also subject to Section 8 housing assistance payment contracts, which remain in place after the sale. Bob, do you want to give a little highlight on this?
Sure. The Assistant Town Planner Karen Horn is here, and I believe there might be someone here from the HBI, which is the ownership entity for Housing Preservation. But this is the Winslow Village project down on Ocean Street. I think there's some, I think one project is, Winslow one is 64 units, the other one is 48 units. These are all apartments. They are a critical housing supply in Marshfield for people that do not earn, you know, above the area median income. And when the affordable restrictions were in place by accident, I think it was Department of Housing and Community Development was listed as the holder of the restriction, when in fact it should have been the town of Marshfield. By having Marshfield hold the restriction, if we find that they're not complying with the affordability requirements, we can bring an action in addition to the state to force those perpetual requirements. This new buyer is a large company. The existing entity is a small company that I believe just owns these facilities, and this is a trend that's occurring nationwide. A company like Housing Preservation, Inc., and its limited partnership that it's formed, you know, there are professionals that operate these types of businesses, and the more they do, it is not necessarily a bad thing, it actually is a pretty good evidence of their ability to manage them effectively. And I've had conversations with their council and asked for additional information about who they were, and I provided that to you, Mr. Chairman, some time ago. I'm recommending the approval because this sale is gonna take place. This new entity seems to meet all the requirements, and they're certainly gonna honor their perpetual affordable housing restrictions and their Section 8 housing contracts, which would be an absolute minimum for me, and they're correcting an error also, which gives the town more rights than we have today, which we should have had, but, you know, that's a gesture of good faith too. So I'm recommending that you approve both of these assignment and assumption agreements. If Ms. Horn or somebody from the applicant wants to add anything on it, I wouldn't be opposed to your hearing from them.
Jared Shepherd from AGI, he's been on the whole time, so he might want to talk.
Oh, what's his name?
Jared.
Jared?
Yeah.
Top left.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. I guess I wasn't aware that other legal counsel provided all that information on my property. I was prepared to say pretty much the exact same thing. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have about our plans for the project, or, you know, any more color on our company.
I don't, I mean, I, when I got into this, I, I would say that you already know that I reached out to council and had questions in regards to it, and all your answers that I received, I was, I was content with, you know, making sure that not those are gonna change dramatically for the residents there and all that, so I'm good. Steve, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Trish?
No, thank you.
That's it. I'm gonna ask any, any questions for you. Do you have anything else to add?
Then that's it. Appreciate it.
So, Mr. Chairman, the only thing that would remain for you to do is to vote to authorize or vote to approve and endorse the assignment assumption amendment agreements, and I gave you a motion under, the draft motion number nine, it's at the very end.
Okay, so everything you've written up here, we're all good, but move on?
Yeah.
So I move that the board vote to approve and endorse the proposed assignment assumption and amendment agreements for Winslow Village 1 and Winslow Village 2 apartments from Winslow Village Incorporated, the current owner assignee, to the proposed owner assignee Winslow Village Preservation Limited Partnership, the proposed owner assignee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, number 10. Discussion and vote on execution of a purchase and sale agreement on 91 Old So Bob, do you want us, give us some details on this, what's going on?
So for people that don't know by the street address where... So, for people that don't know by the street address where this property is, there is a one-acre parcel of land that's next door to the Marshfield Airport on Old Colony Lane. And the property is improved with the home that's very old. It actually does have some historical value. The home is not in great condition. The home is not entirely historical. It has an addition on it that is not considered historical. A couple of years back, an entity known as Equitable Development purchased this property from the homeowner, or the homeowners, and before they began some permitting activities, met with the town briefly and asked if the town would be interested in purchasing it. The town conducted an appraisal, and we weren't able to come to an agreement. It's public now, so I don't mind telling you that for over 60 years, the airport has used a portion of this property for its access, or its main access road, just a small corner of the property. And then, at the rear of the property, there was a larger area that the town has fenced in, and has fenced in for probably another 60 years. And earlier this year, the Airport Commission, acting under the authority that it has under state law, made a taking of two easements to basically ensure that it had access to the airport, because if that was taken away, it would cause to have to relocate the access or realign the access and relocate the fence. They follow a process that is common for the town to follow when it makes a taking. It had the easements valued. The easements were taken, the money was offered to Equitable Development, it was somewhere in the vicinity of $22,000. They brought a claim against the town, attempting to invalidate the taking, and alternatively claiming that it impacted the value of their property for which they intended to develop an airport-related use. The significance of this property is, it's actually zoned in the airport district in Marshfield. In an airport district, some uses are allowed by right with site plan approval, and one of them is a heliport. And a by-right approval, if you could physically locate a heliport there, I think was, has been pretty unpopular with the public. They've actually made a filing with the zoning board of appeals. The board of appeals conducted an original hearing, and that hearing has been continued, I think until tomorrow night, but it is a request to continue it again. The status of the litigation is, they made some constitutional claims, so the town removed that case to federal district court. I actually am handling the case. It's not an insured claim, per se. The Equitable Development asked for a preliminary injunction, preventing us from continuing to use this area. They lost. The court made a judgment that their claim to try to invalidate the taking did not have a reasonable likelihood of success, but that doesn't mean they were precluded in any way, shape, or form from proposing a heliport there. And again, I've, we have separate counsel for the ZBA process, because I'm litigating the case for the airport, and I didn't think that the two should be combined, but that process is ongoing. We began a discussion some time ago with the owner of the property to see whether they would be still interested in selling us the property, and we had some sources of potential revenue that we could, or assets that we could potentially leverage to purchase the property, and we have reached a tentative discussion, which the board is aware of, and the purchases for $735,000. The potential uses of the property, according to the draft agreement, which is subject to town meeting authorization and funding, are for affordable housing and/or general municipal purposes, not necessarily airport purposes. There was a livable residence here not too long ago. It would require a further investment to convert what's there today into housing, because it hasn't been cared for and lived in for some time. There may also be a desire to partner up with an entity like Habitat for Humanity or some other entity and try to build some more affordable housing here. There is affordable housing on Old Colony Lane already, next to the airport property, and ocean shores are abutting another portion of the airport. Some of those units are affordable, so that might be a good option for a one-acre lot to have some affordable housing, and if we don't, we can always keep it as open space, we can keep it as other general municipal land. But the one thing we do do is we prevent this property from being used in a manner that really could be disruptive to that neighborhood. I don't, I've only been on a helicopter once in my life, but I don't think a helicopter can come into a 20 mile an hour breeze coming straight down, and if it's coming in over the neighborhoods, I think that's going to be a problem. And there's been some public sentiment online that that's a problem, and I'm sure you've heard it as the Select Board and the public has heard it. This resolves that problem. If we purchase the property, they've agreed to dismiss their lawsuits, so we're not spending or wasting money, depending on your perspective, litigating a claim, which I think we would win, but the one thing I can tell you is what's going to happen with a heliport if we don't buy the property.
Is, you said it was in the airport zone, so...
It is.
What's it going to take to take, we're going to be able to take it out of the airport zone, or?
The town could rezone this property after it acquires it and put it in the abutting residential zone, which I think is our three. And if you have a 40,000 square foot lot, that's four 10,000 square foot lots. That's an option, but it would require rezoning.
Okay. Steve, any questions or comments?
No, that was a good summary and overview, so I think it makes sense.
I hear you on that one. Trish, any question?
I feel the same way.
Okay. I move that the board vote to execute or authorize the town administrator to execute a draft purchase and sale agreement for the property of 91 Old Colony Lane, abutting the Marshfield Airport, which is subject to town meeting approval, will be acquired for affordable housing or general municipal purposes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make clear that all you're voting on tonight is to give the town the right to vote on whether this is a good idea in the same manner that you've preliminarily said is advisable.
Number 11. Discussion and vote on request for proposal to the town website. Trish, I think this is something that you've been hot on, so you can fill Steve and I in on what you're looking at here.
So, I've been working on this for three months. I've been trying to fix the website for three months. So, it looks like the current website designer is able to come up with some ideas that's going to get us through until next year, but what I'm proposing is that we put an RFP out for other designers, and I've been working with Todd Goodman of IT, and he just feels that if we're happy with what they come back with, and it's more user-friendly, and we're also looking at getting a mobile app, because when you pull up our website on your phone, it's not user-friendly, so, and it's not costing a lot of money, so that's a good plus, too. But he said to at least have the RFP should we need to go forward, because if we get to next year, we'd have to roll over again, because we never put it out there. So, I'm bringing this request to all of us. Okay.
So, when you're saying the, when you have something in place that gets us through to next year?
So, we have a current designer, so that, I guess there was a really good website in place, and then it was decided to try to cut the cost, and they went with a more inexpensive designer. And when they moved everything over, it just has never been user-friendly, it's very confusing, it's hard to navigate, your dropdown stay, we've changed things with the pictures. I've talked to a lot of the older population that just really has struggled with this, and they can't get the information that they want, so that's really, really frustrating. Todd has tried to work with this designer, but, you know, to no avail, but over the last couple of months, they've been really receptive, I think because other people are bringing some of these issues to their attention, too, possibly other towns. So, they are now saying, okay, we can do this, we can do this. Again, he says if we take a look at it and we're happy with it, then we stay put, but if we don't get what we need, then next year, when their contract is up, at least we'd be in a place to have, to slide into something else if we have a couple of options already approved.
All right, so, yeah, request for proposal.
Just, so, I guess we would be waiting for the next town administrator, because I'm sure Peter's too busy to start this in his 25 hours. But, you know, in the near future, I just wanted to get this on the agenda, in the near future, that the new town administrator starts looking at other designers and getting some proposals together from designers.
All right, so you don't, you know, like, to act on it now, just give us a heads up and then...
Just giving us a heads up, but we would need something in the pipeline, because when the contract ends, it's too late to say, oh, we don't like this, we want to move on.
You can get the RFP drafted if you want.
Okay.
With the new procurement person, should be very helpful.
Okay, that would be great. That would be great. You agree.
So, all right, so if we're going to do an RFP, what would the RFP for, for a new website designer?
Yeah.
Is that what it's going to be?
Yeah.
Steve, you have anything to add in?
No, I think it's a good idea. I think the number one point of feedback is usually the navigation of the site, right? It's like, if you go to a supermarket that was built well, you have a generally good idea of which items are in which aisle grouped together logically, so you know which pathway to go down to find what you're looking for, and that's kind of difficult right now, so definitely the process logic and flow could use some work. And, you know, to Peter's point, too, I mean, having a procurement officer, that's something that they can do, is put that RFP sheet together to lighten the load for the town administrator. And so, just the only question I had is, do you know how, I guess, detailed the scope of the project would be in the RFP yet, or is it still kind of being like workshop, how broad the scope would be?
I think the procurement officer would have to work with Todd to come up with that. And again, if they are able to do everything that they've said they're going to do, which hopefully people should see that in the next couple of weeks, they're ready to go live with it, and if we're happy with it, we stay put, so it's no additional cost.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, so I'm going to make a motion, the board makes a motion to request proposal from a new website designer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Taking the time to work on this, I know it's been a thorn in everybody's side. Okay, number 14. Discussion and vote on application for temporary entertainment license, social peer recovery. Name of applicant is Mark Mahorn. DBA, Social Peer Recovery Incorporated. Address of applicant, 51 Cole Parkway, Situate, Mass. 02066. Location event, Salt River Farm, 857 Union Street, Marshfield, Mass. Event description, Recovery Rocks fundraiser event for SSPR. Dates and time of event, 10/18/25, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Type of entertainment, applying for dancing by patrons, live music, amplification system, tents, no food service event, yes, the indoors repairs. Recovery Rocks is an annual family fundraiser that supports social peer recovery, no alcohol is served. So, Steve, any questions or comments?
No, all the paperwork seems to be in order, so...
Yeah. Trish?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, so I got to fill in the blanks here. I move the board vote to grant a temporary entertainment license to Social Peer Recovery for an event at the Salt River Farm, 857 Union Street, Marshfield, Mass. Subject conditions under... Is it going to be the first one, Bob? Mashdowner Law, Chapter 140, Section 181.
I believe they don't have a liquor license or anything else, so this is, yes, the first one.
So, Mash, conditions under Mashdowner Law, Chapter 140, Section 181, allowing entertainment of dancing by patrons, live music, and an amplification system on 10/18/25, actually 10/18/25, between the hours of 2:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. Subject to the following conditions, if any, I don't think there are any other conditions. Town council recommends that they name a person in charge for police and fire purposes. Is there anybody here for Social Peer Recovery?
I'm not sure this is the type of event that would generate...
I'm going of your recommendation, so...
Well, I didn't really know what it was, but when you told me, see, I didn't have your book, so, but when you're telling me the nature of the event, it doesn't sound like it's the type of event we're going to be having the police and fire at.
I get that. Okay, so other than that, so do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Discussion vote on application for two temporary liquor licenses, Marshfield Agriculture and Horticultural Society. Name of applicant, Colin Chandler. Mail-in address, post office, P.O. Box 5, no, Box, yeah, possibly it was Box 5, Marshfield, Mass. 02050. Date of event, September 20th, 2025. Hours of event, noon to 9:00 p.m. Location of event, Marshfield Field Grounds. Description of event, Chamber of Commerce, Lobster Festival. All alcoholic beverages marked. Copy of liquor liability insurance checked off. Copy of tip certificate checked off. Event will be held outdoors. Signed by Colin Chandler on 8/21/25. Subject of liability insurance is shown. Is there two of these in front of you? That was a cops for cars. Okay, I move the board vote to issue pursuant Mashdowner Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, one day temporary liquor license to Marshfield Agriculture and Horticultural Society for events on September 20th, 2025, and... No, there's only one.
And then September 27.
Yeah, this is the cops. Cops and...
Oh, that is, all right, so it is two of them.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it be two separate motions, then?
No, you can do, it's the same applicant, so you can just grant them.
Same applicant, but two different events, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, but I think you'd be okay with this motion with combining them in two motions, so you can do, or combining them in one motion, you can do it either way that you want.
I agree with the town administrator, I think you can take one motion, it's the same applicant for two events. Just indicate the two days that are authorized to have that license.
Yeah, don't I have to, do I have to declare the times, too, and all that?
If they gave you the times, then I'd put the times in.
Right, because the times are different, so... Right, because the times are different, so, and then plus the events are different, so I'm gonna have to... Am I gonna have to name the events and the date and the time differences, or what am I looking at here?
I, I think you should if you can, I, I didn't, see, again, I didn't have the packet, so I didn't know what the two events were.
Miss Jenna. All right, I move the board, move that the board votes issue pursuant to Mashdown Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, one day temporary liquor license for the Marshfield Agriculture and Horticultural Society for the events on, let's start with the first one, September 20th, 2025, for the Marshall Fairgrounds, Chamber of Commerce, Lobster, at the times of noon to 9:00 p.m. I believe that's it, so do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's go with the next one. I move to let the board votes issue pursuant to Mashdown Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, one day temporary liquor license to the Marshfield Agricultural and Horticultural Society for events on Marshall Fairgrounds on September 27th, 2025. The event will be for cops for copters, and it will be held 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Marshall Fairgrounds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Number 16, discussion vote on application for temporary liquor license, Stellwagen Beer Company, Michael Snowdale, Stellwagen Beer Company, mail-in address, 101 Enterprise Drive, Marshfield, Mass. 02050. Date of event, 9/20/25, hours of event, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Location of event, Marshall Fairgrounds, description of event, Social Lobster Fest, wine checked off, wine and malt beverages only, copy of liquor liability insurance, name of the town, district they show, checked off, copy of tip certifications checked, detailed written event narrative checked, outdoors checked, signed up by Michael Snowdale. I move that the board votes issue pursuant to Mashdown Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, one day temporary liquor license, beer and wine only, to the Stellwagen Beer Company for an event on 9/20/2025 at the Marshall Fairgrounds from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 17, discussion vote on application for annual pedals license, applications, Surfside Snowcones, name of applicant, Richard Berry, address, 178 Second Avenue Ave., Marshfield, Mass. 02050. Name of business, Surfside Snowcones, type of business, mobile snow cone cot, Ozzy Operation 12 to 5, Beach Street and Ocean Street, signed by the applicant, 8/13/2025. I move the board votes issue a license, subject to the payment of the required fee pursuant to Chapter 184-14, the general bylaws of the town of Marshfield, an annual pedal license to Surfside Snowcones at Beach Street and Ocean Street for the hours of 12 to 5. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion vote on free cash. Do you have anything for us on that, Peter?
Just, we're in a position favorable in comparison to last year where Megan Accounting, or the accountant, is focused on getting the data into the Department of Revenue by the end of this week so that they can start their determination on what, what the final free cash is. There's been a, she's done a lot of work in preparation to get everything lined up, and it's in, it's close to being in the hands of the state to make their decision. We're well ahead of where we were last year at this time.
Want to speak on it, Meg?
I don't really have much to say, other than we are ahead of schedule, and I'm working on free cash allocation right now, so it's either gonna be at the end of this week or at the end of next week, because I'm actually closing in the test environment at the end of this week, so then you have to just make sure all the numbers are lining up before I send it in for free cash, but then it'll be in the state's hands and they'll have about a month to certify it, which should be adequate because they, there are boots in the ground right now with towns and free cash, they know that they have a lot of communities coming in, so I think we'll be in good shape.
Does, do you or the accountant generally handle the free cash, or is that generally something the town, the town treasurer handles?
It is generally speaking a town accountant function, but what we're doing now is, I think in the past it was outsourced with consultants, it's being done in-house now.
Oh, so it was outsourced in the past, so we just recently started doing it in-house now?
Yeah, I am, yes.
And something new, why was it, why was it outsourced, do you know?
That I cannot answer. I mean, it's not unusual, I'll say other communities do it too.
All right. Do you have any questions, Steve, on it?
Probably why it was outsourced was twice, there were dual vacancies at both treasurer and accountant, so CLA was hired as a firm, so that would be one element in terms of it being outsourced for sure, and then I think this year we needed a little bit of extra help as well, not on the town accountant side at all. Meg's been putting a lot of hours in, working really hard, pulling double duty because she's not only tackling her current responsibilities, she's doing a lot of look back cleanup work as well, you know, so I just want to make clear too, right, that I don't want Meg to get blamed for a problem she discovered that somebody else made, right? That's her doing her job and being proactive, so I want people to feel encouraged to identify problems and to bring them to our attention and not to be afraid that they'll be blamed. So, again, right, in a short period of time, we had two vac, dual vacancies at treasurer and accountant, two critically important department head positions, and so Meg's come in and she's done a lot of look back cleanup work, catch-up work, and she's tackling a large volume of responsibilities right now, so she's been putting in a lot of hours, working really hard, so I just wanted to make sure that we recognized her and thanked her and that, you know, we, we bring some kabloofer to town meeting because a lot of stuff, she's gotta get some flack before she had nothing to do with, she's just been fixing things, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of a little concerned with your comments there, whether there's some unknown in regards to fixing other people's problems and/or town meeting coming up, as you said, so it's, but I definitely get the town meeting part, so hopefully we'll highlight it, but if that's the case, then hey, you're doing your job, you know, and everybody should appreciate of it one way or the other, you know, so. Trish, anything to add?
Nope, thanks, Meg.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, number 21, discussion and vote to reopen special town meeting warrant. I put this on because there were some things that I would like to add on to it if possible, if you both agree. And so, I move that the select board votes reopen a special town meeting warrant for October 20/25 to allow the insertion of articles. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You had asked at the beginning of the meeting, you know, to feel free to interject because we had a lot of action items tonight, and if there's anything that we should table for another time. You know, we have several items on here that are to reopen and add articles to the special town meeting warrant, and just in terms of deadlines and timetables, we're publishing the town meeting warrant on September 16th, because we always publish it a month in advance of town meetings, so the public has time to review it. So, we really don't have any full-time professional staff in our office right now, quite literally, and we don't have anything drafted at the moment that I'm aware of, so I'm not really sure that we want to rush this, like, we want to do this carefully, vet it, do it right, get public input, and it, but input from every relevant town department, so I'm not sure that we want to kind of sprint and rush a number of different articles when we're gonna publish the town meeting warrant on the 16th. And then there are a few articles on here that aren't even under the purview of the select board, there are articles that would have to be introduced by the planning board in their zoning changes, and there would also have to be a public hearing. So, I think these are items that we should take up at the annual town meeting, when we have more time to prepare and make sure that we do it right, but I'm not sure it would behoove us to add all of these articles to the special town meeting warrant tonight.
No, I don't have a problem with that, it's, I figured I'd throw it out there and, and see what the feel is, because in regards to, I didn't think there were any, anything big in a, in a way. I mean, there is one in regards to the taping of the board meetings and committee meetings, I think that's an important one, in my opinion, but I could hold off until the spring to bring that forward and file it. Do you have anything to say, Trish, on it?
Yes, actually, Mike DeMayo, the harbor master, had requested something to go on the warrant, I believe, a while ago, and then I was at the waterways meeting the last week, and he had asked if it was on the warrant, and when we checked, it wasn't, so he asked, yeah, you can speak, Meg.
Well, because I don't think it would be substantially changing the article, we could throw it under the free cash article.
Okay, okay.
I think that was acceptable.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Um, Bob, in regards to 24, you and I spoke about the Brent Rock overlay, which I think Steve was highlighting here, in regards to the planning board, have you, what did Greg say to that?
So, when you brought this up with me, my most immediate concern was that whenever you're proposing a zoning change, regardless of who's proposing it, the planning board has a requirement under Chapter 40A, Section 5, to conduct the public hearing on it.
Right.
And 14 days advanced notice of that public hearing has to be given in order to make it legal. I haven't seen the draft article at this particular point, and the planning board hasn't drafted one because they weren't aware that someone was asking them to do that, so I did let the town planner know, and he basically told me if we got an article in like today or this week, you know, he'd be already at the beginning of October, the very end of September before they could have a public hearing, and town meeting could be impacted in the event that there's a problem with the public hearing and there may not be an ability to devote on it. He did say there was enough time in order to do that, he has no idea what the planning board thinks about the elimination of the Brent Rock overlay district, they hadn't discussed it or considered it in any way, shape, or form, he doesn't know whether they would be favorably reporting on the article or, you know, unfavorably reporting on the article at town meeting. So that, he was concerned about the timing, he had no idea what they would decide to do on this. I can tell you, because I attend the ZBA meetings, there hasn't yet been a Brent Rock overlay district project, although we all know that there's one property owner down there that has contemplated one, but the project that they contemplated didn't comply with the overlay district regulations, so it couldn't be approved without a zoning variance. So, I, I, it's, it, it may be tough to get this in.
No, no, I'm not, like, somebody asked me, this is it, I'll throw it in, I'll see where it goes.
I mean, traditionally, special town meetings are for matters that couldn't be anticipated at the time of the annual town meeting, things are of an emergency nature, many towns won't even put zoning on at a special town meeting because there's nothing there of an emergency nature. You know, Marshfield is a little looser than most, we kind of have a robust special town meeting every fall, so I'm not saying that you couldn't put it on there, but it's been a traditional, with most towns.
Okay, no, I don't have a problem, putting this off to next year whatsoever, so.
Okay, yeah.
It's, I figured I'd give it a whirl, it's in a stick, it's always next year, not a big deal.
Yeah, and if you wanted to discuss one item, right, the Marshfield Community Media element for all the town boards and meetings, did you reach out to anyone from Marshfield Community Media before?
No, see, my thing was that, as I thought about this, I wanted to get it on, but then I was gonna have my, my chats with everybody between IT and all that to find out what was going on, you know, how we can implement this, because all the things I was thinking, I said, you just can't, it was only passed a time, we put this on at pass a time meeting, we just can't implement it right away, there's gotta be a process to it between everybody knowing how to use Zoom or however else like that, so it's, I guess, I was just gonna put it on there, but then we can set up all the procedures in regards to prior to implementing it, but it is something that I do believe does, it does need to be done in regards to the boards and committees starting to take their meetings and posting them, so everybody in town can be informed of it, because, I mean, I find it very useful myself when I go watch the ZBA meetings, conservation, planning board, to find out what they're doing, what's going on in town, and they're having an open discussion on it as opposed to trying to grab the minutes, if they're available from the committee and all that, if they're taping it, there are people that have an interest, we'll watch it, and, and the other thing is I look at, especially after we, with the boards and committees, I think we all will have a better understanding of how the boards and committees operate as the individuals as well, I think, at the end of the day, that's the way I looked at it. To me, that's, you guys are some of my choices and replacements and all that, I did it because I, I've watched those committee members and, you know, either was happy with them, some of them, I wasn't happy with them on how they performed, so that's the way I look at it.
Sure, I was just gonna say that the president of Marshfield Community Media, Sean Leary, is here tonight, if you wanted to ask him any questions.
Oh, no, I, I, you wanna chime in or?
I just have some questions, but I mean, you're not gonna take them?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you and I can take it up another time, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, it's fine, we good? Okay, that's a good thumbs up. 28, discussion on Labor Council search update, where are we at, Peter?
So I have a recommendation for you at next meeting, I've had, I've reviewed all the, all the applications, I need to sit down with Danielle Carrigan in HR, get her input on them, and then we'll relay the data to you and, and she'll give a recommendation on, on which is, is the, the most favorable proposal.
How many proposals did you get?
Six.
Six?
Yeah.
And are you gonna forward all of them to us?
Yep.
Okay, and, so you got six of them, you're gonna forward all those to us, and how, how did you advertise it in regards to sort, putting this out for people to get on?
We contacted firms, we put it out on, on the Mass Municipal website.
Okay.
And we received, you know, a, a number of responses.
Anything to add, Steve?
No.
Trish, anything to add?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, discussion and vote on, number 29, discussion vote on composition of playground committee. So I believe that we put the building commissioner down as a committee member, and I think we had a couple of conversations in regards to putting a position down because we never know if that person's gonna be living in town or not, if they're not living in town, then they can't be a voting member, so I was looking to scratch the building commissioner pot and, and just leave it as is, what are your thoughts on that, Steve?
I think, you know, in the earlier stages, when we discussed the formulation of the playground committee, we thought it would be a good idea to have a mixture of both citizens in the town as well as town employees to lend a level of expertise.
Yes.
And then also, right, they're the ones who can help carry the rock and move things forward, and it would be a helpful way for them to communicate and update the residents directly and for the residents to have access to them, so I thought it was a good idea to have that kind of mixture. Our building commissioner does live in town, but in addition to that, I think it would be good to have him on there because he's really the only person who's certified to inspect the playgrounds, to make an assessment about... to inspect the playgrounds, to make an assessment about whether they're ADA compliant, and to make those types of evaluations. So he does live in town, and he has a lot of expertise to value, and I know that a lot of the moms who have rallied around the, the playground issue and the lack of ADA compliance are, are big fans of Andrew, and, you know, they were here one night, he said, you would think that, you know, it was one of his kids who was being affected by this issue. He's put so much time and, and thought and effort into it, so I'm, I'm comfortable with keeping it as currently constructed, but I'm open to feedback.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with Andrew being on it, it's just that we got under building commissioner, and building commissioners change from time to time. So the whole thing is that you put a building commissioner on it in some future date that doesn't live, that he can't be a voting member, and I'm wanting to, to understand that, as of right now, building, uh, Andrew's on the committee as building commissioner, he is a voting member. Um, so, like I said, I don't have a problem with Andrew per se, it's just building commissioner as the title. What are your thoughts there, Trish?
We can always cha- we've already changed a couple of the seats on some of these committees, so if that were ever the case, we would take that out. Uh, we did that at our last meeting about the opioid fund committee, we took the town administration seat out.
Correct.
And we put it as, at large, so if that's the case, we could just reevaluate it, or the board that's sitting at that time would just reevaluate it and change it at that time.
All right, so you wanna leave it as building commissioner?
Yeah.
You just don't wanna put Andrew's name in at the moment, is the, on the committee? I mean?
No, because it, it actually, I think it does, I mean, any buil- any building commissioner that was in that position would have knowledge, some knowledge, on construction and building and safety, so I think it would be a nice addition to that committee.
I don't disagree with that. Um, but my look at is, some of the things that we've done, especially when you highlight, um, um, was it Mr. McMahon? Mahoney?
Mahoney.
Mahoney, um, and that change out, that, um, I think it was the town administrator that was in that position, and the whole thing is that we don't know who we're gonna get for a town administrator right now, that could be living outside the town. So it was a concern in regards to, if we do, then he's not gonna be able to vote. My look at is that, as the way I see the makeup of this committee right now, that the playground, uh, committee, so it's building commissioner, but still a voting member, I mean, we could just take out building commissioner and just put Andrew Stewart in, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, if it's something you worry about, we can just cross that bridge when we get to it, you know?
All right, no, I was just throwing up, because, I mean, we've, we've made some changes already, and we got some people holding titles that aren't living in town, so I'm like, you know, some, this is, this is gonna be something that, yeah, we may cross that bridge, and, and why, why start something that we're trying to fix, we've been trying to fix this whole time, so, all right, so, uh, you two wanna leave it, leave it as is?
Just, uh.
All right.
Mr. Chair, would you mind if we went back to, we did miss a few at the beginning?
What do you want?
Would you mind if we went back to, um, we didn't do four, five, or six?
Yeah, I know that.
Is that okay, uh, you'll go back to them?
No, no, I will, it's, uh, I was just trying to get through stuff here.
No, that's fine, I just didn't know if you were aware.
No, I, I, I am.
Okay.
It's, uh, it was, um, what can I say? I was just going in the order of the stuff that I had, already had lined up.
That's fine.
Um, okay, discussion vote on setting date for potential special election on school roofs. Uh, Peter, what, how, how are we gonna do that process?
Bob, could you, you know, fill me in on that? Um, it's basically, it's gonna be a request for an override, I guess?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to this. Um, so, we have at the special town meeting coming up a debt exclusion article, and that is to fund a portion of the roof repairs at one of the schools that, I, I'm sorry, I forgot which one, but maybe it's Martinson?
I think.
Okay, Martinson School. So, um, not only will we have a town meeting vote to authorize the debt, but we'll have to have a debt exclusion article because of the outside of the, the levy to pay for this. Um, the select board actually have to call the special election to do it, um, and we have to give the town clerk, I think, thirty-five days' notice of the special election. Um, the election can be held before the town meeting, or it can be held after the town meeting, it doesn't make a difference as to what order it is, but you will have to set a date. Um, you, you need to have a conversation with the schools, because that's where we do our vote, make sure that the school is available for that day, and, um, give the town clerk thirty-five days' notice to call that election. My, I think it's impossible to do before the town meeting, so it should be done after the town meeting. Um, a date, Marshall traditionally votes on Tuesdays, but you don't have to, you could do it on a Saturday morning. Um, you probably wouldn't keep it open all day on a Saturday, um, and it might work better for the schools if we did it on a Saturday. Um, a, a lot of people have, families have kids that are involved in sports on Saturdays, and that's sometimes been an issue there, but, you know, if you keep the, uh, if you keep the election, uh, open for a reasonable period of time on a Saturday, I don't know why, with advanced notice, people can't vote on it on a Saturday. So I, I think you probably shouldn't set the date today, but I think you should explore with the superintendent of schools, whether a Tuesday or a Saturday, which are traditionally dates for voting, one might work sometime in November, or, um, it could be after that, but you're gonna give thirty-five days' notice by statute.
So you think we should set the date today, but we should all?
I, I don't think you should set the date today.
Oh, you said you don't think it should?
No, I, I think you should put this on the next agenda, and, um, by the time of the next agenda, you would know what date was available for the schools to conduct the vote. Um, you know, this is basically a school committee request, uh, so I think you wanna coordinate with the school committee and, uh, and have them tell you what they think they would like for a date. Um, I'm sure they can tell you what the superintendent will be able to accommodate, and then you can instruct the town clerk. The language for the ballot question is pretty simple and straightforward, I think we actually have it already. Um, if not, we've done, I've done this dozens of times with debt exclusion articles, this will not take very long for us to do that. I'll provide that to the town clerk, uh, and the school committee. Uh, remember, bond council's involved in this as well, so we'll, we'll come up with the language in very short order, so it's just picking the appropriate date, more than thirty-five days from the date, you need to have the election.
All right, so, um, Peter, you gonna be able to reach out to the superintendent?
Sure, yeah.
And have one of the school, school committee agenda and, and iron out a date, and then get back to us?
Yep, I'll be able to do that at the next meeting.
All right, um, number thirty-one, discussion vote on potential increase for fees for select board office permits and licenses. I've asked the staff when the last time this was increased, and especially where we maybe have some financial issues, and, um, they don't seem to know when the last time, it seems to be quite a while, and, and as the permits and fees have rolled across us, and, and, um, and I look at the, what we're charging, I think we are, uh, probably not charging enough, as the way things are going today, in my opinion. Um, so my look at was that, um, to double, but, uh, but I'd obviously, um, get your guys' thoughts, and, cause I need to, and all that, so what are your thoughts on it?
Yeah, um, you know, the purpose of the fee is to cover the administrative cost of the time it takes our staff to go through the paperwork, so I'm fine with making sure it's set at an appropriate level to cover the administrative cost, right? But I wouldn't wanna arbitrarily double it without more information and more data and more analysis for what a more appropriate, uh, level might be. Maybe it's twenty-five percent, maybe it's fifty percent, maybe it's appropriate right now, but I would want kinda more information before voting to increase fees for residents and businesses.
Yeah, I think you'd have to look at other towns and see where they stand, and not just arbitrarily double.
All right, that's fine.
You're gonna do that research?
What's that?
Call the other towns and find out what they're charging.
No, I don't care what they're charging, why am I gonna base it on other town? I'll base it, I can take what, what Steve is taking, I mean, that's the thing, everybody bases it on other towns, oh, this town's paying this, all that, or that.
It's a standard, it's a standard process.
It, it, um, you know, Mr. Darcy was correct in stating that it has to be related to the actual cost, and to, to make it greater than that could be seen as an unlawful tax, so I would have to see, I, I could come up with, um, you know, some, some proposals on things that I think that are out of step.
Is, um, when you say it's like an unlawful tax, what do you mean, is?
If you're charging for this, a fee for something that's beyond what the actual cost of conducting the administrative work is, it can be seen as an unlawful tax. It can be seen, your, your fee is supposed to be related to the actual cost, it's not supposed to be revenue raising.
So, all right, so like I said, it's, uh, and I asked the staff about this, they, they couldn't put a date on the last time these permits and everything were increased and all that, so maybe, obviously that's something that we need to look into?
We can look into it, yep.
All right, um, oh, discussion vote on mission statement requirement for board and committees. So I know that we put two, three committees together, and, um, three new ones, I should say, but I've been informed that there are some others out there that don't have, that have been existing, that don't have a mission statement, so my look at is that they should have a mission statement that should be coming for us and, and for our, for our approval, discussion and approval. What do you think about that, Steve?
Yeah, I think it's good.
Trish?
Absolutely.
All right, so you guys are good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, I move that the select board vote to require, establish a requirement that each town board and committee have a mission statement, and that these statements be submitted for select board approval. Actually, you know, something, uh, we should be put a time, month? Should we give them a month to do this?
Give them two?
Two months?
Yeah, cause some of them have to onboard a lot of new members, so there might be things they wanna prioritize, and just give them time to put some thought into it.
So November eighth?
Because some boards might only meet once a month.
Yeah, I know, some boards, yeah, exactly. Okay, let me start over again. Move that the select board vote to require, establish a requirement that each town board and committee have a mission statement, that these statements be submitted for select board approval, not later than November eighth, twenty twenty-five. Um, Bob, no, it's not sure what is being requested, some boards and committees acts under specific state and local bylaws and regulations. So, all right, so I mean, with that noted, Bob, then, um, uh, well, actually, it'd just be the, the board, the committees that operate under us, right?
I, I think if you're, it's always great if there's a committee that you've created is told by you what their job is, okay? So I actually think it's very appropriate for your board to tell all the committees that you've established.
Yeah.
Or that operate under your authority.
Right.
What their job is. But we have another crop of boards and committees that actually exist, because state law requires them to exist. For example, the school committee, um, the conservation commission, the advisory board. Um, these boards exist because state law requires us to have them, and their charges set forth in state law. Like, when a town reaches a certain population level, it has to have an advisory board. It's called different things in different towns, but it has to have a board that functions as if it were our advisory board. So we know what their job is. Um, could they create a commission statement? Yeah, but the admission statement's gonna say, we're gonna do what state law tells us to do, as an advisory board. Um, the conservation commission, chapter forty, section eight C, basically says, town shall have a conservation commission, and their duties and responsibilities are set forth here. Can they come up with a mission statement that says what their duties are? Yeah, but it'll be, basically, they're gonna do what chapter forty, section eight C says, uh, and they're gonna enforce the State Wetlands Protection Act, the local wetlands protection bylaw and regulations, so that's kinda a pretty simple thing. The zoning board is gonna, you know, do what our general bylaws tell them that they already have to do, and that's to hear, um, you know, s- special permits and variances, and consider site plan approval, and hear appeals from the decision of the building commissioner. Um, those are all state-defined responsibilities. Um, pl- planning board is elected anyways, I don't think you wanna tell them what their mission is, but their mission is actually pretty much to adopt a subdivision control bylaw, or, or, or regulations, and then to enforce them. When people come in and subdivide their land, and there's some related things like approving and making recommendations regarding zoning changes, so I don't think you need it for those, but I, I think if you're gonna establish mission statements, maybe the first go-around would be for the committees that you've created.
No, no, that's, that's all I was looking at, I'm not, I wasn't looking into, uh, delving into any elected boards or anything like that, so.
Okay.
Just the committees that, um, that we've created, yes.
Okay. I think that's okay.
Do we have to change any, uh, language in this vote, or what do you?
I think you could request that the selectman-created committees produce a mission statement and, or draft mission statement for your consideration at the Mar- at the November eighth meeting. And, and we'll give notice to those committees, so that they know which ones are obligated to create the mission statement.
All right, so how about if I say, I move that the select board vote to, to require select board-created committees establish a requirement that each town board and committee have a mission statement, um, that these statements be submitted to the select board approval, and note, not later than November eighth, twenty twenty-five. Does that sound all right, Bob?
Yeah, I think that's all right.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then thirty-three, uh, discussion vote on board and committee liaison assignments for the town playground committee, local historic district study committee, and cemetery commission. Um, so I was, my look at is that I was gonna, uh, make Trish Simpson the playground committee liaison, and, uh, I'd make Steve the local historic district study committee liaison, and the, and Steve would be the cemetery commission, so, uh, I'm open, I heard of sulking out of Trish on that one.
I really like cemeteries.
Do you want playground?
I mean, I would probably get arrested if I was seen at a playground, cause I don't have any kids, so, you know, tall, pale.
Oh, you have small kids.
White guy.
You have small kids.
No, you wouldn't be.
I think you'd be great at the playground.
No, no, not me.
Yeah, if you don't want to do it.
You know something?
You don't have to go to a playground.
All right, you know something? I, I'll take the playground, all right, I'll do it.
That's, I'll, I'll take the playground, it's fine.
You wanna take the playground?
No worries, yep.
All right, so, so, uh, all right, so.
Me, I open.
That's, that's a future line, you know, so, um, all right, so, uh, Steve Darcy will be assigned to playground committee, Trish?
I'll do either of the other.
I'll have a both.
We'll both?
Yeah. No? Local historic district study committee, Trish will have, Trish Simpson will have the local historic district study committee and the cemetery commission.
Is it okay? My mother's on the cemetery.
Oh, that's a good question.
You're just gonna file a disclosure.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding, no.
Which one is she on, the cemetery?
Cemetery.
I don't know that you can have any votes, you can, I, I don't know that you'll have a lot of votes, or there's any financial interests there, you could file a disclosure, you both on the committee.
Okay.
All right.
That's exciting. Another daughter time.
No, if you don't, if you don't vote the way she does.
I'll hear about it.
It could be a problem.
This is how families get broken apart.
Yes. All right, I think.
No, we have to go back.
Motion?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh.
Did you vote on the snow cone thing? I'm sorry, I missed that, okay.
I move that the select board to approve the following members to serve as liaisons of the playground committee. Uh, town playground committee will be under Steve Darcy, local historic district study committee under Trish Simpson, and the cemetery commission under Trish Simpson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Back to four.
You know, I, I was just checking to make sure, there's so much stuff here. You know, I was just checking to make sure, there's so much stuff here. So I think we have everything covered. Besides the stuff we haven't discussed. Okay, number four, discussion vote to adopt the proposed committee and board handbook.
Would you like me to talk about this?
Um, yeah, absolutely, Trish, since you're the one who presented it to us.
Um, so, um, Attorney Galvin created a handbook for committees and boards in 2023, and it didn't really, um, it didn't really go anywhere. So, um, after working with some of the committees that, you know, I had mentioned to him, it would be great if we had one, and he said, oh, this is great, I, I created one, um, because I was looking at other towns that had them. So I feel that, um, he's done a great job with this. It provides clear guidance, consistent expectation for committee and board members, and I believe its formal adoption will be a valuable step towards strengthening our government, governance practices and supporting effective collaboration across town leadership. It just, it lays out about the minutes, um, about appointments, about oath of office, and looking at what other towns have. His is, is overly complete, so I thought, um, I, I really thought it was well put together.
Um, all right, so I went through this and, um, I do have some things that I would like to change, or at least discuss with you to change. One is, um, actually, this one for Peter. Um, boards committee commission membership, 2.1, appointments, second paragraph. Um, I'm thinking that this should be put, the second paragraph, at least a portion of it, should be put on the town website, especially if people want to serve on boards and committees. What do you think, Steve? Uh, reading that real quick, notice of vacancies on boards are publicly posted on town, board and board in the town website. Then it goes, residents interested in serving on a board are encouraged to attend one or two meetings of the board on which they are interested in serving, become familiar with the town commitment and other functions of the board, and application can be obtained in selectman's office. I don't know if anything like that's posted on our town, uh, website page in regards to boards and committees. So would either one of you, uh, be interested in posting something like that up there? People are interested?
That they're encouraged to attend the meetings?
Oh, I, I think it's a great jo, uh, great idea. Because that was one of the things that people were saying and, but.
Right.
We also need to know when these organizations are meeting and not just in the calendar, so people have to go searching, like, it might be the third Monday of the, of the month. At least so that they would know where to look in the calendars. It would be nice if that was all in one place as well.
I disagree, so, um.
But no, that's a good suggestion.
I wouldn't say, Peter, you ought to do that, but is that something you can relay to Jenna that, uh, I would say.
You can add that to the words.
Take that, put that on the website?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Uh, just note under 2.4, there's something there I think that's kind of relevant to what's happened. Appointed board members whose terms are due to expire, um, on April 30th, so I think that does need to change to June 30th, um, of occurring year will be sent notice sometime in March. Um, request that they inform the appointing authority as to whether they want it to be reported. That was the one thing I did see that needs to change.
So June 30th?
Should be June 30th.
Okay. Um, all right, so I have 2.5 vacancies, resignations, lack of attendance, um, if there is a continued unexplained absence of a board member or a conflict of interest should arise, the town administrator may ask for the member's resignation. Um, so, uh, I'm wondering, Trish and Steve, if it, since we are the appointing authority of this, if it should be the select board, not the town administrator, um, to ask for a member's resignation. Um, what are your thoughts on that? Steve?
Um, we could just change it to the town administrator or select board. That way, you know, if we only meet twice a month, the town administrator could take it up more immediately, which would then enable us to get to that more quickly to fill the vacancy at an upcoming meeting. So, I mean, I would be fine with that, saying the town administrator or select board by a majority vote.
To remove a member?
Yeah, I agree. It's, it goes back to the fact that, you know, the town administrator's usually here 40 hours a week and we're not. We're, we have other jobs and responsibilities, so when we are here, it's just hard to kind of get all of this done.
Yeah, but I mean, going back to previous discussion, the, we're the appointing authority, so I mean, let's say that the town administrator doesn't see eye to eye on somebody that we appointed, so you're just going to, you, and you just let them go. Are you fine with that?
But the, no, because the town administrator, they're there to advise you and work with you, so.
I don't think the town administrator would arbitrarily go against the will of the board and remove somebody that we wanted to keep, and let's say in the unlikely circumstance that does happen, we could just reappoint them at our next meeting and then problem solved.
You know, I, I could probably offer a suggestion. I think you should still give the town administrator the right to ask for the resignation because the town administrator, him or her going forward, is going to be here, as Ms. Simpson just said, but maybe you could say, if necessary, the town administrator requests the select board revoke the appointment.
Yeah.
And then you get the right to revoke the appointment, but the town administrator makes the request to you.
Yeah, I would look at something like that.
Okay.
If you want to, I mean, you are the appointing authority, so the words would be added, and I made it in my draft, the town administrator, or after the words, if necessary, the town administrator may request the select board revoke the appointment.
Okay.
I'm sure a town administrator would be delighted to let you do it instead of that person.
Um, okay, then it says, uh, also, the appointment of a board member who fails to attend three consecutive meetings may be terminated. Uh, I was looking at if we ever should, disclaimer in there, unless there's a justification for that.
Yeah, that, that's why it says "may." So, uh, in full disclosure, I've represented somebody in another town that missed three consecutive meetings, and that person was a member of a zoning board. Two of those meetings occurred in one term and one occurred in the subsequent term, okay? And you're going to be horrified when I tell you this, but it was a woman and she had missed for a very, very personal, family reason, one of the meetings, and the board in this town actually revoked her appointment, and I sued them in federal district court and the judge told the town to go outside and settle the case when they found out the reason. So that's the, why the word "may" is there, because there are always extenuating circumstances. So, um, it's not mandatory or you automatically forfeit, it's "may" because you could have that circumstance like I had in another town.
3.1, election of offices, uh, at the bottom, there is no limit on the number of consecutive terms. A member may be elected to serve as an officer. I was wondering if that was something that had to make, want to consider where there's term limits somebody else for a period of time.
I do have term limits in number six.
I did see that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, oh, do you want me to talk about that now?
Um.
Let's get through this first, just to kind of, without muddying the waters and then subsequently.
I know, I get that. So, uh, what are your thoughts on that? Like a limit of two terms or a break or?
So you do want to discuss that right now? I'm happy to, if that's what you guys want to do.
Oh, you're saying a break, like?
Like, they're two separate action items. That's what I meant.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, I thought you meant like, or you wanted, when you just said that, I thought you meant you wanted to take a, a break, break.
No, no, no. Um, if I.
Hold on.
Just remember, this isn't their term of office. This is serving as a officer on a board. So can the person be the chair of the board for multiple consecutive terms? If you enact a term limit policy for membership on a board, this takes care of itself, because they won't be able to be eligible to be an officer on a board that they're not.
Right.
Going to serve on, so I actually think you can leave this here without worrying that it affects the term limit issue.
Oh, all right, I see what you're saying, Bob, is that just the offices?
Yeah, this is a chairman, vice chairman or clerk.
Somebody want to be chair, like, a gazillion times, they're allowed to do that.
Correct.
All right.
This will take care of itself when you have your discussion with term limits.
Okay. Um, 3.2, duties of officers ensures that all members have taken the oath of office and acknowledge receipt of information from the town clerk with regards to open meeting law and conflict of interest law. Um, oh, this is another one, I think, if you both agree, that, uh, should probably put, put up on the website in regards to appointments of, uh, people applying for.
Just so you know, every, every appointed official is going to receive a copy of this handbook, and we're going to actually ask them to sign for it. And, you know, they'll know that these are their duties and responsibilities when you accept a chairmanship, and you shouldn't accept it if you're not going to do this, because we're going to hold you to it.
No, 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 I get that, but at least give them a heads up before they, so they know what they're going to be.
I, I think we should put the board and committee handbook, once you adopt it, on the website, so that anyone that's contemplating joining a board not only goes to a meeting, but they actually see what their duties and responsibilities are in general.
That's, that's good, I like that, yeah. Um, clerk secretary ensures that minutes of every meeting are taken. Um, so, as we see right now, um, we assure it, somebody, I think, is, uh, clerk, actually, I should say, the clerk secretary of the position, ensures that minutes of every meeting are taken. Uh, so does that mean the, the clerk itself is going to be responsible taking the minutes?
Yeah, so let, let's take the zoning board just out of the blue. The blue, the zoning board has a staff member, but if we didn't have the staff, because there was a, you know, a budget crunch and the secretary on the zoning board of appeals would be responsible for keep taking the minutes, creating the minutes, getting them approved and filing with the town clerk.
Um.
Your, your board, perfect example, um, right now.
Right.
Um, you know, Mr. Moran is here tonight, so he, he's going to deal with the executive session part of the meeting, but our temp, or, or Jenna or our temp will then take care of the open meeting minutes, so, um, but if we didn't have that access to staff, then it would fall on Ms. Simpson tonight.
It's, uh, well, I just, I just look at that, um, things are unavoidable. I was just looking at between trying to do your role as a select board member or whatever position you are, then you have to minutes. It's questions, the ability to focus on the conversation while you're trying to write down, uh, what's going on in the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can give you some insight, I mean, you could, I mean, our meetings are taped, so it's going to be simple if you had to.
Well, that's, that was one thing I was wondering, was that if, could you take the minutes off a taped meeting? You can't use the, the meeting as an official record, I guess, per se, but.
No, the, the meeting minutes that you approve become the official record of the board's actions. It's not the videotape, but the videotape actually gives you the verbatim text of what's said, so.
But you could use the video to help you with the minutes.
Absolutely, that's what most people do these days.
This is the one I was wondering, that, uh, associate members, um, what is the role of the associate member, Bob, in regards?
So like, the zoning board of appeals and the planning board have associate members. The associate members participate in the meetings, they ask questions, the zoning board allows them to even vote, but their vote doesn't count unless there's an absence of a regular member, and that's pretty much what an associate member does. You know, the associate member's role is basically, when someone comes in, they don't have a lot of experience on one board, you might appoint them to the associate membership, and then after they participate for a period of time and a vacancy occurs in the regular board, the associate's positions are the farm team that you can promote from, not that you're required to, but that's kind of been the expectation over the years here in Marshfield, that the associate position is a, you learn, you can ask questions, you can vote, but your vote doesn't count towards the legally required vote, and in that manner, a person becomes acclimated to the position and it becomes a good farm si, farm system.
Do, you said it just applies to the planning and ZBA?
It, the conservation commission could have associate members, there could be other associate members on other boards, but those are the boards that traditionally have them, and the reason why they have them is they're quasi judicial boards, and if they don't have a certain amount of people present and able to vote, um, the permits can't be granted, or, or you could run into a constructive approval. So that's why those boards have traditionally had associate members. It doesn't mean you couldn't have associate members on other town boards. Elected boards, you'd have to do a charter change or there'd have to be a state law that authorizes associate members.
Um, all right, when you say that the, the, the actual member is absent, that doesn't incorporate them walking out of a meeting, um, to avoid a vote and the associate can step in, would it?
Well, I think I know what you're talking about, but, um, the reality is, any board member can recuse themselves from a, from a, from a deliberation or a vote, and an associate member could vote in their place. Uh, we don't typically ask the board member that accuses themselves to explain why, but if they did, uh, it's just not common for people to explain why. Um, I, you know, if you get elected or you get appointed to a position, you should vote unless you can't because of a conflict of interest. You shouldn't do it for political convenience. They're tough decisions to make.
No, well, this wasn't a conflict of interest, this was a political convenience to that person, in my opinion, uh, that's why I asked, uh, in regards to it. It's, uh, uh, it's one of the things that.
Well, I'm not going to pretend that any decision made by the zoning board of appeals or planning board is going to please everybody, and, you know, part of why you pick who you pick for those boards is because they're not afraid to apply the law to the facts and make a tough decision.
No, that wasn't, that's not the case here. That was a decision made by somebody, uh, at least one part for me anyways, in regards to how they performed in that meeting when they walked out and decided, because it was a political purpose for them, in my opinion. Um, the, 4.2, definition of meeting, um, there was something here in regards to the meeting, uh, that I was trying to figure out, yeah, attendance by a quorum of a public body at a meeting, but another public body has complied with a notice of requirements of the open meeting law, so as long as the visiting members communicate only by open participation in the meeting on those matters under discussion, uh, by the host body and do not deliberate. Oh, I know what it was, you know, something, you had, oh, I know, I looked up deliberate online, the, got a complete meaning of it, but you have it down here, it was kind of different. Is this like a legal, would I be looking at a legal meaning of deliberation, Bob, what you have here at the third paragraph down?
Well, the term deliberation is actually defined in state law or in state, uh, open meeting law regulations, so I think we took that from this.
Okay. And then, um, apart that same third paragraph further, this includes individual conversations that occur in a serial fashion, which the quorum members participate in or deliberate. When you say serials, that mean like?
Yeah. It means that you talk to Mr. Darcy and Mr. Darcy talks to Ms. Simpson and Ms. Simpson talks back to you.
Second order.
You, not that you've done that, but that's what that means. Serial communications, this one board member talks to another one, that person talks to a third or fourth or a fifth, and everybody ends up talking about whatever that topic was and knows what's going to happen.
All right. Um, 4.6, meeting schedule, it is highly, it is strongly recommended the boards do not meet on election day and high Jewish holidays. Um, should it, should we change the high Jewish holidays as religious holidays or what do we?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I don't think it's limited to, um, Jewish holidays, I think it's any religious holidays.
Right.
You know, I, I could tell you, you can't obligate anybody to do this because there are people that don't have any established religion or don't believe in, and you don't want to discriminate against them either, but, so. want to discriminate against them either, but, so. But I mean, it is likely, if there is a holiday like this, that there'll be an absence of a board member or two, so.
How about you just say holidays?
You can, you can say holidays too.
Election Day and holidays.
You get added Festivus.
Do you want to just make it holiday and take out?
Yeah.
Okay. There's only one board that actually cannot, as a matter of law, meet on an election day, and that's the zoning board of appeals. State law says they can't meet on Election Day.
I think the only thing I have left here is just some of the stuff I highlighted in regards to the town administrator's position, authority. 5.2 recusal process, if you do not have access to a computer or printer, the necessary forms will be printed for you by the town administrator's office. Would you two think that I should say it be the select board office?
So disclosure forms can always be provided by the select board's office, if we need to, and town officials call me from time to time, asking me where to get those forms, and I actually will ordinarily try to help them fill out those forms and send them the link, because they're all available online. So, but we can certainly provide those forms to them, because it only takes a moment to download them from the website.
I'm not worried about the forms and all that, I'm just talking about how this is written, where it says printed to by the town administrator's office. I'm just looking at blanking out town administrator and putting select board office.
Well, I, I think that's to Ms. Simpson's point, the town administrator is generally a full-time employee, and actually, access to me by town officials is actually customarily provided through the town administrator. Like, if somebody wants an ethics opinion and they're on the board of health, the process is that that person's supposed to ask the town administrator if they can get an opinion from town council. So, only because the town administrator is generally there. And then that's not in derogation of any authority of the select board at all. It's just an efficient process.
Yeah, I mean, I would think otherwise of that, that calling at the town administrator's office means that the town administrator, I mean, what would be the sense in calling, calling for a select board, then, if you're just, you're going to say the town administrator's office, should be the select board's office.
You could say town administrator.
Over this, and I just think, like, putting language in there like that would give everybody, and the way I look at it, my impression is that town administrator is the authority in town, even over the select.
So maybe a solution is to put select board or town administrator's office.
No, select board office, that's my opinion on it. It's, I don't know about Trish, Steve, do you have any thoughts on it, in regards to the debate?
I feel like people kind of understand the spirit of intent of it, and we're kind of splitting hairs here, so I'm not too worked up about it.
It's, all right, Trish, yourself?
I think you have PTSD.
However you want to look at it.
I say, if it, if it makes you feel better, select board office is fine, but I just think the intention is meaning that the select, the town administrator is here, and he is more accessible most of the time, and we're not.
Yeah, that's fine, he's accessible, and it has nothing to do with it, the whole thing is that's not the town administrator's office, he works for the select board in the select board's office.
Okay, so claim it's select board. Strike that.
Okay.
I think I've got everything else. Steve, you got any questions on the?
No, I'm in favor of the policy, I think it's a good idea. It's a helpful guideline for people serving on town boards and committees, and it's important to have a standard too, right? But just one, one thing I wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page about is that it's only a standard if it's enforced, right? And if it's enforced predictably and consistently. So just two sentences, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page about, right, in regards to conduct, right? Town officials, employees, appointed volunteer boards and committee members, and the public.
Hold on, what page is that?
I'm looking at the Word doc, so if you're reviewing a scanned PDF, our page numbers might be different, but basically.
What was the, the number, 2.4, 2.5?
It is, let's see. One second, scrolling through.
Is it conduct of public officials, five? Is it in five?
That's, yep, that's what it is, yep. So there are two separate bullet points, but just to save time, I just took out two sentences. Standards of conduct, 5.3, so if you're looking at the Word doc, it's page 20, but if it's the scanned PDF, it's not counting the page number, I mean, the cover page and the page number.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's, yeah, page 20, 5.3. It's just two quick snippets, basically, right? The first is, town officials, employees, appointed volunteer, board and committee members, and the public are free to express their ideas without the threat of harassment and/or intimidation. There is no place for verbally or physically accosting anyone for any reason at any time. And then the next bullet point is, members should not make statements or promises regarding how they will vote on matters that will come before the board and committee until the member has an opportunity to fully hear the matter during a meeting. So are we all in agreement that as the appointing authority, if somebody was in violation of this, that we would take action as a board, up to and including disciplinary action and removal?
All right, roll back to me where the first one was, that you had, that the bullet point that you were talking about, on the first one you highlighted.
I think these were under civility, 5.4?
Yes.
Oh, all right. I was looking under.
It's 5.4 civility, first bullet point, civility underlying, and it's the third sentence. Town officials, employees, appointed volunteer, board and committee members, and the public are free to express their ideas without the threat of harassment and/or intimidation. There is no place for verbally or physically accosting anyone for any reason at any time. And then the next bullet point is for integrity. No, sorry, going down towards, let's see.
I thought that was on page 20.
Yeah, I just copied and pasted them into my notes, so I'm.
Okay, it's under, members of all boards, committees, and commissions are expected to, and it's the third bullet point.
Okay. So, you know, are we all in agreement as a board that if someone was in violation of this portion of the handbook, that we would take disciplinary action as a board?
All right, which one are you talking about, civility or?
Civility, and then also the portion about broadcasting your position or vote on an issue before you fully hear the matter before your board.
And where's that one falling under?
Page 20.
Yeah, that one's back to page 20.
Page 20, and then it's under, so see where it says, members of all boards, committees, it's.
No, no, I get that.
Fill it down.
All right, so recognize that actions in official legally convened meetings, is that one, is that the paragraph?
If you're on page 20, standards of conduct, it's the third bullet point, and it's the second sentence. So members should not make statements or promises regarding how they will vote on matters that will come before the board or committee until the member has an opportunity to fully hear the matter during a meeting.
I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding what you're asking.
That we're all in agreement, right, that the reason that we have this policy is to set a standard, and that way, if someone's not following the standard, that we would take action as a board, as the appointing authority. So if someone is in violation of the standard of civility and the standard of conducting yourself during a meeting, and we received a complaint that was credible, we investigated it following the proper procedures, and they were found to be in violation of this policy, as a board, are we in favor of taking disciplinary action that may include removal for violating the handbook?
Well, I think, I think that's, probably goes for all of these things, don't you? Like, the respect, the civility, the integrity?
Mm-hmm.
That's why it's all in there, so I think we would have to come together and have a discussion.
Agreed, yep.
Bob, did you have something?
No, I, I mean, these are what, how boards should treat one another, board committee members, I mean, the SJC case says that people who speak in public comment can say whatever they want, they can be profane and stuff like that, but the people that you appoint to town boards can be held to a higher standard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's, I mean, you know, I, I mean, the only thing that I think Steve brings up in regards to, members should not make statements or promises regarding that they will vote on matters that will come before the board's committee until the member has an opportunity to fully hear the matter during testimony, I mean, I could see that the logic of it, but sometimes, I guess there are matters that come up that a member's going to be opposed to something regardless, I don't know how you control that, I mean, to a degree.
Bob, would you mind weighing in and?
So, I'm going to just pick on the zoning board of appeals.
Yep.
If somebody has a matter coming up before the zoning board of appeals, and it's a special permit, could be for anything, addition on a house, and someone reaches out to that zoning board of appeals member to advocate for themselves outside a meeting. I've always told the zoning board of appeals members that if they, if that happens, you need to disclose that conversation, because you're basically, when you're on a zoning board, you're acting as if you're a judge. And if a judge is being lobbied outside of a meeting to vote a certain way, the judge has an obligation to tell the public and their fellow board members that they're being lobbied. And look, when you live and you work in a small town, that happens. But all I can do is encourage the ZBA members to disclose it, so that their actions will be, you know, will have integrity, and the process isn't tainted. They're not supposed to decide on the basis of what they've been told about a matter, they're supposed to decide on the basis of what they hear at that meeting. So I'm not picking on them, but the same is true for you, if you have a dog hearing coming up, and the dog has seriously injured somebody, and, you know, the dog owner really loves that dog and doesn't want the dog to be put down, and they start calling you and to try to plead their case before the meeting, it's going to be incumbent on all of you to say, you know, I have to wait so that I decide it fairly until we get to the meeting. So I hear the information without having it biased or influenced, and I'm free for public sentiment. And those are the toughest, some of the toughest decisions you'll have to make as a select board member. I think Peter was the town administrator, maybe when in Norwell, we had to, they had to order a dog put down that had bitten someone repeatedly, and it was the, literally the only death penalty case we had in Massachusetts. It was very upsetting, very emotional for everybody, the people then appealed it to court, but the select board had to order that dog put down. It was going to hurt somebody else. By the way, that dog did bite somebody else before we were finished with the court process, and the family ultimately put the dog down. You just don't want to be lobbied outside the meetings. And if you do, you have to step away, and you've got to make sure you tell your colleagues on the board that, you know, this person contacted me, I told them that I couldn't discuss it outside of a meeting, because I wanted to hear all the evidence from the meeting to decide it fairly. And that's all that this is here for.
The reason that's a best practice is to protect the town, because you don't want to give someone grounds to sue the town and claim that they did not receive a fair and impartial hearing, and that the outcome was predetermined. So that's why you want to be really measured and careful about what you say in advance for any matter coming before your board.
I see your point on that. I mean, Bob, is Steve Alvali on that, in regards to, I mean, the whole thing is that people run for board positions for particular reasons. Pretty clear about sometimes why they're running, what their goals are, so I mean, the whole thing is that if something comes up that falls in within their, what they campaigned on.
I'm not sure that that's what this is intended to affect, okay? I'm not sure that's what this is intended to affect. If you win on a platform that you're fiscally conservative, and you're going to be cutting positions because that's how you believe to do that, perfectly fine for you to say you're going to do that, particularly as an elected official, okay? You have a wide latitude to express your position on political positions, but appointed officials have no property interest or right to even use their title when they're out talking to people. Oh, you know, as a member of the zoning board of appeals, I'm going to endorse Mr. Darcy or Mr., or Ms. Simpson, or Mr. Kelly. You don't have any property rights there, so it really is principally to go af, to prevent appointed boards, and some elected boards, like the planning board, from saying, from being lobbied outside of a meeting to decide things, so, but that's what it's there for, to preserve the integrity of a public hearing.
All right, so Steve is correct that if somebody's making comments before hearing it, you could set, set it up for a lawsuit between whoever the.
Yeah, if, if you guys ever in a circumstance where you have to remove a public official, and someone's calling you and saying, I want your promise that you're going to vote, you know, to remove this person or not to remove that person, that conversation's going to end, and each of you are going to have to say, so that you don't get, you know, attacked, that this is in an appropriate conversation, I'm not going to discuss this with you, any decision I make is going to be solely based on the evidence that I hear at this public hearing.
Yeah, I get that.
People shouldn't be trying to line up votes for something like that with any town board before it happens. It doesn't mean as an elected official, you can't campaign on, I'm going to make change, I'm going to reduce the budget, I'm going to increase the budget, I'm going to reduce taxes. All of those things are fine, it's not a particular matter, okay? It's just in general, it's a policy statement. But if you have a particular matter that's going to be the subject of a public hearing, no town board, whether elected or anything, should make decisions until you hear the evidence.
All right, I think, I think what Steve pointed out here is, is important, and I think that should be highlighted to everybody that gets appointed to these boards or whatever.
Everyone's going to sign this, so that they can't say that they weren't aware.
Right.
So if we adopt this, this will go to every single board member?
Every board member, correct. And, well, the town clerk should collect the signatures, so when someone says, someone breaks, breaks the policy, and I don't know how they would do it, and they say, well, I wasn't aware of that, well, we have your signature on this town handbook, and you're responsible to know the contents, because that's what it says. I've read this handbook and agree to abide by it.
Right, okay.
Okay, you good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You good?
Yeah.
All right, so we will. I move that the board approve the proposed committee and board handbook drafted by town council, and that it be distributed by human resources as soon as practical to all board and committee members. I just want to add in that with the agreed upon changes?
Amendments.
Amendments, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Discussion vote to adopt changes to public comment policy. All right, so what would, everything that's been bolded, Trish?
I just took the things that we discussed in that meeting.
Couple, like a month or two ago?
Right, and added it, I mean, I didn't add the clock, even though we have the clock now, but I, I guess I just wanted to know that there was some type of follow-up to public comment, so whether we disseminate through tidbits, and we call it for the record, if it should be known by everybody, or the TA or the chair emails the speaker, or an item discussed will be placed on the future agenda, because we're not supposed to comment, but, you know, I know people want, want follow-up information, so, yeah, everything else. know people want, want follow-up information, so, yeah, everything else, it's only a few changes that we would, we would make.
All right, so the changes are, like I asked, the ones that are in the bold lettering, right? So, if a speaker needs additional minute, please ask prior to speaking. If there's a group speaking on the same topic, there should be one spokesperson. And then following the meeting information, or following the meeting, information will be disseminated through tidbits for the record, TA or chair email to speaker, item discussed will be placed on future agenda. Are those, are those add-ons or are they already in there? Were you worded them or?
No, these are add-ons, so we have to vote to, to amend the policy that was made last year.
Okay. Steve, what are your thoughts?
I just have one tiny clerical subjective suggestion. So, for bullet point five, the last sentence, if there is a group speaking on the same topic, there should be one spokesperson. I would suggest that we change it to it is recommended that there be one spokesperson just because that could get a little subjective and I'm not sure that we could restrict public comment in that manner. So, but apart from that, that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
I move that the board approve those changes made to the public comment policy, that this policy as amended by posted on the website under the select board's policies as soon as practical. Do I have a second?
Can you say that again?
I move that the board approve the proposed changes made to the public comment policy and that this policy as amended by posted to the website under the select board's policies as soon as practical.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Number six, discussion on, discussion about board and committee term limits. All right, Trish, I mean, yeah, Trish, you brought this forward as well, so.
Again, just speaking to term limits, I know that we really encouraged people to step up and volunteer to be on committees and boards and so we were pleasantly surprised by all the applicants. So, I know in the past, we were told that a lot, a lot of people were on various boards because there wasn't a lot of participation. So, at this time, I'm proposing term limits and rotational proposal. The purpose is to ensure balance and leadership, prevent stagnation and encourage broader civic participation by establishing clear guidelines for member tenure and rotation. And again, these are open to interpret, to discussion, but I came up with some guidelines based on other towns. Standard term length, each appointed member shall serve a term of three years unless otherwise specified by town charter or select board directive. Terms shall begin on July 1 and end on June 30, aligning with the town's fiscal calendar. Maximum consecutive terms, members may serve a maximum of two consecutive full terms totaling six years. Partial terms of less than 18 months shall not count toward term limit. Mandatory break period, after serving two consecutive terms, members must observe a minimum one-year break before being eligible for reappointment to the same committee or board. During this break, members are encouraged to mentor incoming appointees or explore service on other town committees. Staggered term limits to maintain institutional continuity, member terms shall be staggered, which we do, so that no more than one-third of the committee rotates off a given year. Vacancies shall be filled for the remainder of unexpired term with eligibility for reappointment based on time served. Succession planning committee shall proactively identify and mentor potential future leaders to ensure a smooth transition. Chairs are encouraged to rotate every two to three years, even with a member's term to foster shared leadership and diverse perspective. Exceptions and extensions in exceptional cases where continuity is critical, example, major ongoing projects, the select board may approve a one-year extension beyond the standard term limit. Such extensions must be publicly disclosed and justified in meeting minutes.
All right, so, putting term limits on the board committees and then exceptions and extensions, in exceptional, in exceptional cases where continuity is critical, e.g. major ongoing projects, the select board may approve a one-year extension beyond the standard term limit. So, what is a ongoing project, I guess?
Well, a.
Clerical ongoing projects.
Well, if, it could be, one of the committees is in, in the middle of a planning and activity and it will be in five months and maybe have that individual just to stay on for one year to get through the event and maybe come up with, that way they'd have a time to go through the event, some type of follow-up, how the event went, and then it wouldn't have to necessarily be a year, it might be a six-month extension or, I just don't want to say if someone has something planned that's coming up, you just pull them out even though their two consecutive terms might be up.
All right, so maybe I missed it in here, but what happens if you can't find anybody to fill that void and then there's somebody on that committee that their term limit is up?
Someone's committee, can you say that one more time?
So, if we put term limits on committee members?
Yes.
And the term comes up where they can't, they have to take that break, but we can't find anybody to fill that role, what do we do then? Or does this provide for it? Anything in there provide for it?
Well, hopefully more people are volunteering now.
You could look at that, but we can't guarantee that. This year was good, but next year, next year it could be.
Yeah, but that's why this is a discussion. That's why I'm bringing this up. I mean, because we have people that have been on boards for 20 years.
Yep, I don't disagree. I know, and I would imagine I almost got feedback in regards to why some people were taken out, had all this time in and all that and like I explained to a lot of people, I go, like, some people are serving on multiple boards. I was like, you know, there's somebody that wants to come in and help out. I was like, I'm all for like, you know, letting them get on that board, somebody's on three boards, you know, let's open up some space here, you know, so, what are your thoughts, Steve?
I, I understand like the intent of it, but I, I do think that the more you do something, the better you get at it. And if there's someone who's been doing a good job and they produce positive outcomes for the town consistently and they're a known commodity, I think that there's a value in that and I wouldn't want necessarily replace them with someone who doesn't have that experience. And historically, we've had a problem of the number of vacancies on town boards and it took two years of concerted effort to fill out a lot of those vacancies. So, while we have a good problem right now where we do have a lot of folks interested, right? We might be, we might be creating a problem in the future with more vacancies if we do have term limits. And so, you know, what I think we should be most focused on when we do appointments or reappointments is, are they going to do a good job or have they been doing a good job? And are the outcomes for the town positive? And, you know, I think that's something that we should look at. And, you know, let's say, for example, the cultural council, right? So, we got an email from their committee chair that that board is term limited, it's two, three-year terms, and she let us know that before we voted at our last meeting on a Friday, that within the next year, four out of their 11 seats would have turned over and Ned Baines wasn't reappointed and he's heavily involved in planning the summer concert series. So, that would be a little bit incongruous with this proposed policy, so I hope that we can kind of address that in the future with Ned when there is another resignation because two people are moving in the future. And just the piece that I'm concerned about is, right, we've seen how this has played out in the real world. In 1990, California passed Proposition 140, which put in term limits of six years in the state assembly, which is the House in California, and the unintended consequence was the amount of expertise that they lost. And what they found was that now people who were outside of government understood how the wheels of government turned better than the people inside of government. And the people inside of government became very dependent on the expertise of outside groups, which kind of empowered outside groups and special interests. So, I do think there is a premium of value on experience and, you know, every single year, we do have natural turnover on our town boards because I've seen it every single year on every town board, you know? You have people who feel like they've had their fill after years of service and they're ready to rest and move on to other things, or there might be new life commitments and time commitments that come up and they're ready to move on. And I've had plenty of people who resign midterm before their vacancy is up because they have no new commitments that come up that are taking up a lot of their time. And, you know, if we want to impose term limits and create turnover on town boards, we have the opportunity to do that every single year on June 30. So, we have the opportunity on a case-by-case basis to vote every single year to impose those term limits. And just one topical subject I'm thinking about right now is the deeply flawed and very unpopular MBTA Communities Act. That was drafted by people who had little to no municipal experience. So, I'm just worried about rules and regulations not being crafted as well because of that lack, lack of experience and institutional memory. So, I think the intent of it is really good, but I'm just more so concerned about maybe unintended consequences. And I think that we already have the ability to impose terms with how we vote June 30 every year.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it came back to Ned, you know, and people reached out to me, I said, you know something, Ned, doesn't necessarily mean Ned can't participate with the board or like that, just can't be a voting member, you know? And I, and I even emailed, Ned emailed us, they emailed back saying, hey, it was like, help, Lou, show the way and all that and everything. But when Ned and I were talking, communicating with each other, he goes, I wish we could do the, what do we call it, we just had a discussion on the standby person.
Alternate.
Was it?
Alternate.
Thank you, alternate. And I was like, you know something, Ned, you guys don't have that? He's like, no. I was like, well, you know something, I'd entertain that. I was like, because, but just like getting back to what you're trying to do, but what you're saying is I think if we put an alternate for an alternate or maybe two alternates for all these committees.
They would learn.
There you go, they would learn and then they'd be able to fill, fill the position as it comes up.
Sure, I mean, two thoughts I had on that would be, first, in Ned's situation, he's already served on the board as a full-fledged voting member and now we're proposing that Ned put in the time commitment of a full-time member without the power to vote or any of the responsibilities.
No, no, I, I didn't say put in the time, I didn't, he can go to the meetings and, participate in them. It's all the time, I was like, that's just not a voting member, you can go in the meeting and participate, you just can't vote on the thing, that's all.
I think he might look at that as like a step back.
No, no, I, I agree with that, but I, I think like I explained to him, I was like, you had like three, four board positions. I was like, now we got a whole bunch of people, it's like, we gotta kind of, we, we have these people, take, take advantage of it without a doubt.
And I, I do agree with your point on the alternates. I think we should have more alternates on more boards, especially the really complicated subject matter intensive boards like conservation and ZBA, right? Because you could take someone who doesn't have the experience and it's an opportunity for them to learn and grow and ask questions and participate. But I would also point out that traditionally, when you have a vacancy, you slide up and promote the alternates because they made that time commitment and that investment, but we didn't do that for the ZBA.
No, well, that was the, that was another thing that I thought of in regards to is that you have these people, you have people like in the alternates, but when, there's one particular group, but it didn't seem like talking to the chair that any of the alternates wanted to move up. So, just, I think that sometimes, sometimes people are happy to be an alternate and to stay in that position without having to be a full-fledged member. So, I mean, I definitely get what you're saying, whoever's an alternate should have the opportunity to slide up. They could be in for consideration, absolutely. I just, you know, I guess, we'll see what happens going forward in the next, next round, next year.
Yeah, and those are the kinds of things that we can flush out with discussion and things of that nature and just make sure we have all our ducks lined up in a row and everyone's on the same page and, you know, that's why it was, I thought it was helpful to reach out and ask the boards and committees for their recommendations and feedback and backgrounds.
There's, there's nothing wrong with that, Steve, you know? Like I said, there was one person that, you, before I got elected, that had my attention, I paid attention, you know, something, I was like, I think we need to change, you know, so, so that's where I was at. So, Trish, upon our discussion, do you want to work on this and see if you can craft something up?
No, I think, I think what you both said made a lot of sense and, and I agree, we have that decision to make and, but I think we have a good, the handbook is a good start and we'll just give those to all the board members and the expectation will be there. And I think also being a liaison and doing that part is going to help us kind of get a little more involved in understanding the different committees as well.
Okay, so, I'll pass on a vote on that?
Yeah.
Everybody all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and you know something? It's been so long ago, but I think we did, we did have a discussion about the appointment of Dan Mahoney, right?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
The only thing I have that you didn't do is the turkey trot.
Oh.
No, that was done.
Okay.
So, public comment?
Yes.
Let me get my clock.
Get to break out the new clock.
MC Hammer wasn't available.
I really don't know how it works either.
All right, Catherine Vaughn, 460 First Street.
If you feel like you need more than two minutes, just ask.
Okay, I hope I don't because I'm really hungry. I'm just going to read right off of what I wrote so that I can make it quick. I come to you as a lifelong supporter of Marshfield. I have spent every summer of my life in Marshfield, so at least 25. I come to you as an investor. Over the past 25 years, I've invested in multiple projects in Brant Rock and Green Harbor. I come to you as a resident and I come to you as a family member of business owners. I've never stepped up before because I have the same name as the owners of the jetty and I thought it would dilute my voice. However, this relationship has also given me a front row seat to the challenges of owning a business in Brant Rock, the process behind it and the blood, sweat and tears that go into it. This is not an easy place to make a living. All that said, as a resident, property owner, investor, much of my financial stability relies on the revitalization of Brant Rock, as does much of my happiness. The current state of the Esplanade is an embarrassment. The conditions of many, if not the majority of the buildings are not only unpleasant to look at, they are unsafe. The conditions make business viability almost unachievable and if it weren't for the short summer season, it would make business impossible. The cost of upkeep and maintenance of businesses in the Esplanade exceeds normal cash outflow for any small business owners and they, they have to shoulder that. Yet, when I see existing businesses try to improve their properties, they are met with nothing but roadblocks. They need to improve their properties not only for their success, but to take people's eyes off the disrepair around them. Why is there a push to stop progress and growth, and growth when businesses like the jetty are already struggling to survive? Why are hazardous buildings left standing while businesses trying to improve their properties are hit with roadblocks? There are, there's a lot on this agenda. You've gone over so many things now. I think you took off the elimination of the Brant Rock Overly District for now. I find that proposal very concerning, but it's. I find that proposal very concerning, but it's gone for now. One thing listed on the agenda was the use of the Jetty parking lot. It's not a parking lot, it's a patio as deemed by the Marshfield Select Board last year. Even listing it like this on the agenda is disrespectful and factually incorrect, and leading people to believe there is an open decision to be made. Nonetheless, you've indicated there is some sort of decision to be made, which I find confusing and concerning. This would be a pivotal issue for our community, as it directly affects a vibrant and accessible space and the proprieties ability to maintain a business. Do you want another empty building there? The Jetty has been quietly supporting the community in countless ways for over eleven years, from hanging flags, to funding the community Christmas tree, to the Christmas tree lighting, to the same, to at the same time donating trees to families in need. They would never tell you all of this. They support local teams and fundraisers, just to name a few things. When a local business went on fire, it was so unfortunate, they called them in and their workers, they fed them, they gave them a place to sit and regroup and comprehend what was happening. They do this with their own money, even though operating a business in the area has become nearly impossible, due to the lack of foot traffic and car traffic most of the year. Why is this even being discussed? I've attended many of these meetings, and what I see is this board listening to an uncredible individual that has already cost the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars by suing the town and the Jetty and losing. I'm not sure why this individual, already proven to be causing unwarranted disruption with false allegations, is able to interrupt the daily running of a business and waste everybody's time at significant expense, to have an already sanctioned decision, the Jetty patio, come back in front of this board. You are hearing him. What I hear when speaking with people at the Jetty, and what I see when I am there, trust me, it's a lot, is the joy the Jetty, its owners, and the patio bring to people. You can't pick and choose what you decide to look at to decide whether or not, to use an overused phrase, they are a good neighbor. The Jetty, which is working hard to beautify its property, the only holdup of further beautification is a function of the permitting process and the ever-present of the threat of revocation. The Jetty is facing the harsh reality of a crumbling esplanade and ongoing adversity. Removing the patio could cease operations. I'm here to support the Jetty's vital role in our community and the need for development in Brant Rock, and the need, the need and development and progress in Brant Rock.
Thank you, Catherine. Can you get it working? All right. Mr. David Snow, 64 Ocean Street.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Just two things. First, after tonight, I think it's pretty clear, your notification of meetings and meeting agenda items needs to improve. It needs some work, it needs to be a little more proactive. You've got folks that had to run out here this afternoon, you had Marshfield Community Media that found out about something that's gonna impact them on Friday. It's just, it doesn't smack to giving people an opportunity to be thoughtful in their response. So, clearly, there's something that needs to be done there. More importantly, to me, the Jetty that Kathy just spoke about, we spoke about earlier, I just question the selective nature of, you know, poking at a business that's working in the esplanade, in terms of fairness, while doing due diligence, which I admire. A select board member frame their questions to neighbors as, do you have a problem with the Jetty? Which seems like it's pejorative right off the bat, you're leading, and you could ask a much more open-ended question. When a couple of neighbors spoke up in support of the family that runs the Jetty, the response was, I don't care about the family, I want to know if you have a problem. So, I'd call that unprofessional, I'd call that, again, pejorative and prejudiced. It borders on harassment, it's just unprofessional. So, my ask to you tonight is to support Brant Rock businesses, existing businesses, and maybe, you know, support smart development and infrastructure improvements, and be fair and be professional. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Mike Arsonal, 68 Ocean Street.
He's gone.
Thank you, Dave. Denise McCauley, 11 North Street.
She's gone, too.
Thank you. Scott Dixon, 82 Ocean Street.
Hello, good evening. Scott Dixon, 82 Ocean Street. I'm also the president of the Original Brant Rock Village Association, a neighborhood group that's trying to better the neighborhood. I think some of you guys are aware of that. I've written letters to you before, I've spoken here before about my support for the Jetty. The neighborhood overwhelmingly supports the Jetty. I know there's an individual or two that have had a problem, but overwhelmingly, the neighborhood enjoys the Jetty from a business perspective. The outdoor patio brings life and energy to the neighborhood, which desperately needs it. There's only a handful of businesses that continue to thrive on the Jetty, on the esplanade, with the Jetty being one of them. But as Kathy has said, even that is becoming difficult. So, I would ask that the select board be respectful and try to support a business that is trying to thrive in the town. It feels like this issue of the patio keeps coming up. So, I'd ask you to think about, you know, supporting a business that's paying taxes and trying to, trying to better the community and better the neighborhood, rather than constantly bringing them back up on the same topic. My second point is, I'm disappointed, Mr. Kelly, that you would try to bring a article as important as a zoning article, and get it on a town meeting agenda, without any meaningful conversation with the neighbors in the neighborhood, without respect for the planning board or the public hearing process, on a topic as important as that. It concerns me. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Patricia Riley, 170 Woodford Circle.
Good evening. I might need an additional about twenty or thirty seconds.
That's okay.
I timed this.
Can't figure out the new clock, so...
I'm relying on notes, because it's past my bedtime, but I have to say, in all my many years serving this town on different boards, which I will note is more experienced than all of you combined, I have never seen such an egregious insult to the volunteers on town boards and committees than the debacle of the August 22nd select board meeting. This board is doing everything it set it disliked about prior boards and town officials. The 822 meeting made it clear that all the talk about wanting to be transparent was nothing more than empty words and broken promises. This was done in three ways. The first, a Monday announcement of a Friday meeting that was going to happen in the middle of the day, was at best inconsiderate for all those people who applied and were interested in attending. At worst, it was a deliberate attempt to keep participation as low as possible. Second, names were presented and voted on without any deliberation, despite an agenda which indicated that there would be discussion. There was no discussion. It is worth noting that Mr. Darsey requested a discussion, but Mr. Kelly promptly shut that down. Further, there was no explanation of any of the qualifications the board sought for appointments, there was nothing about the qualifications of peoples whose names were brought forward, there were no interviews for the Town Administrator Search Committee, which had been mentioned at the previous meeting. It reeks of cronyism and nepotism, and, I'm sorry, and favoritism. It's a slap in the face to all the residents who applied, especially to those who were not reappointed, and there was no explanation to them about, or reasoning behind the non-reappointment after their dedicated service for years to this town. They deserve an explanation, individually, they deserved explanations. And third, for a board that touts its commitment to fiscal responsibility, it is inconceivable how the chair blatantly disregarded the professionals he hired to advise them. He ignored the advice of the call-in center, who the town is paying thousands of dollars to guide and advise him on this very process. I think it's fourteen thousand dollars we're paying them? Then, he ignored the wisdom of the acting town administrator and continued to put forward the name of a town employee, against all advice. Finally, even after Ms. Simpson rightly recused herself from a vote due to her relationship with a candidate, Mr. Kelly continued to put forward the name of someone who he has publicly admitted to having a close personal relationship with. I don't appreciate your smirk, Mr. Kelly, I have to say. The meeting and the process was a travesty. There was zero transparency, no dialogue, no discussion, and no rationale behind decisions. The appointments were shrouded in mystery. This is the antithesis of what this, this select board was supposed to stand for. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Mr. Neil Duffy, 17 Bryant's Lane.
Good evening, Neil Duffy, 17 Bryant's Lane. I'm Director Butter from the Jetty, and all I can really say, they're not very good neighbors. My neighbors and I have written dozens and dozens of emails, asking the Jetty to be a better neighbor, turn it down a little, redirect the lights, just not a very good neighbor. It's incredibly loud and incredibly disruptive to our neighborhood, but then again, how could it not be? You've got an outdoor concert venue, zero feet away from a residential neighborhood. Of course, it's gonna be loud, of course, it's gonna be disruptive. There's no neighborhood in this town that would think it'd be okay to have an outdoor concert venue right next to a residential neighborhood. But there's gonna be a public, I understand a public meeting or a public discussion on this later on, so I'll get back to that later. What I really came here tonight was to wonder why, actually to re-address an issue that I brought up last May, and actually Attorney Galvin led right into it earlier tonight. We, the town of Marshfield is a town within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and because we're in the town of Massachusetts, we're required to follow state law. And one of the state laws is you just can't park on sidewalks. When you park on sidewalks, people have to walk on the street, pedestrians. The handicap, people pushing carriages, joggers, kids are all walking on Ocean Street because cars are parked on the sidewalk. Now, it's a state law that you can't park on the sidewalk, and I brought this up in May, but all summer long, cars are parked all over Brant Rock, all on the sidewalks. And I'm just kind of curious, maybe I'm missing something, is there a rationale? What is the reason why the town of Marshfield is allowing cars to park on sidewalks, forcing pedestrians onto the street? I'd just like to know why. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
All right, so that's it for the public comment. I think that wraps up our meeting. I vote to adjourn this meeting of September 8th at 10:14. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody.